Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 6th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room in case of mishap. Now join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and it's nice to have a full house tonight. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Salt Point Solar. The applicants are seeking approval for a solar farm. It includes a special use permit as well as site plan approval for a site located at 525 Salt Point Turnpike. May I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Applicants' representatives, come on up. Mr. Stumpf, good to see you again.
Thanks.
I brought my outfits for TV appearances. I saw myself on YouTube last time I was here, so I made sure I brought my best.
You look dashing tonight, I'll tell you.
Appreciate that, you as well. Thank you.
Would you like to bring us, update us on the changes that have been made since last we saw you?
Sure thing. So, this is a two-megawatt community solar project located on 525 Salt Point Turnpike. And I was, last year, I think, back in the chilly parts of this year, back in February, and then soon after this meeting, we had a site visit. I joined many of you trekking through the site area, and after that, we've submitted some responses, and there was a recent submittal. The most recent submittal was May 25th. And we can go through those tonight if you'd like, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that there will be a supplemental submittal, hopefully by the end of next week, with a few items that are remaining. One is the shippo concurrence, and our engineering team from TRC has just finished today, and they noticed that concrete foundation that I think some of us saw during the site visit, and no historical significance there. But we'll, they'll be reporting back, and we're pretty sure there'll be no historically significant parts in the area, so.
It's not a very nice-looking foundation that's been chopped up and thrown over there, so I can't imagine that it's historic at this point. But it could lead to perhaps a question as to whether there was something there that might have been of historic value. Mr. Murphy refers to the site as the mansion, I believe?
Yeah.
And you did too. So, long timers, I've only been here 25 years, people who grew up here, apparently remember the structure that was there at one point, and I have a feeling we have some people from Poughkeepsie here tonight who may remember what was there long ago as well. Speaking of the site visit, what we mostly noticed were, that's when I first saw the park across the way, Peach Hill Park, I didn't know what it was, I could just tell there was something about it. I've since done two site visits to Peach Hill Park, and I think I emailed Mr. McIlwain that we will be requesting a visual impact analysis. I know what screening is proposed, but a lot of the, along the eastern boundary, down a slope, some of the arrays go down a slope, so we're going to make sure that we have some kind of screening. We normally don't request white pine because it grows too fast, and the lower branches stop the screening for most advantages, but since this is a couple of hundred feet, or 150 feet or so above the site, white pine would actually help because of its fast growth to mitigate, I think, impact. But we'll have a look when you hand us that in.
Yeah, we're actually in the process of providing the visual assessment of the area, and along those lines, I did my own site visit to Peach Hill Park today, and I actually did some, I did a little bit of bushwhacking, and I think, if you can see, the bushes whacked back. So, but I did take some pictures, and I can bring those up if you'd like. Also made sure to get the brochures.
Sure.
I went to the summit, as recommended by, I believe, you, and I, I think you'll see from the pictures, it'll be difficult to even spot the panels, you'll see that from the pictures, but also part of the supplemental bundle that we plan to bring and submit next week is going to be a viewshed analysis, and that will also show that there are some places where the panels might be visible, but Peach Hill Park does not appear to be one of the places you'll be able to see panels. But here's the pictures I can submit to the board.
Please do. And I should add, just for the audience's edification as well, that one of the reasons that we're looking at this is, in terms of SEACR, which is to evaluate community-wide environmental impacts, in this instance, I have, I know that there's a house that's located, I believe, north of this site, that's pretty high up, that'll have a view of it. But we don't, we can't evaluate impacts to each individual site. However, this is a park that's used by literally thousands of people, so we're going to make sure that we have all ideas of what the possible impacts are. Thank you for providing these.
It's a lovely park, yeah. I enjoyed trekking through it.
It's a nice hike.
Yeah. Just to give you a little reference for those pictures, by the way, note the date, so I'm not lying about bushwhacking today.
Oh, I trust you.
And if you notice, on the front page, there is to the right tree, so all I've done is, at the summit, I kind of took a picture that was a little bit west of north and then a little bit east of north. So that's, if you see that tree, it kind of shows you how I moved my angle from the highest point.
Having been up there myself, there are a couple of, it's not, the summit is, would be sort of like the spoke of a wheel with hubs going out of it. The hub of wheels, spokes going out. This looks as though it's shot not at one of those, I'll call it spokes, where they've created viewsheds, but across the broader top. Ms. Axelson, one of our consultants, provided a map of the trail system for Peach Hill Park. If you'll notice on it, and we'll email this too if you haven't received it already, it's got little spots with binoculars where you have particularly nice vistas. I believe that there's, there's one here and one here. The summit would be back over here, but I believe here would be a clear spot over to it, because I've looked at it myself several times. I can take pictures next time I'm there as well to show you.
There are more pictures, and, because I actually used that map, and thank God I did, because I might still be there if I didn't have it. But I tried to take pictures from what I saw to be the summit, appeared to be the summit. I didn't, I was looking for other.
Yeah, the summit is right at the top, there are spots along the way, trail stops where it has little, Peach Hill Park people are here, I'm trying to decide what to call it. It's got little wooden stands where, look, take a picture here or look here.
There was the Mid Hudson scenic view, and, yeah, I stopped at those locations as well.
Where, I want to point out, if something, the town has passed an ordinance that presumptively would seem to argue that we should be trying to approve projects like this to provide lower carbon footprint, more energy sources, et cetera. At the same time, if something is higher than a project, you're always going to have some kind of visual intrusion. So the, we're just looking at mitigative measures, and as I said, white pine struck me. Our board never uses them because they lower limbs too quickly, but that's usually for like a residence with a business next to it. And if there's going to be something that grows up tall and is able to screen and provide a green buffer, then that's something that I think we'll be looking into. But we won't know that until you provide us with the analysis. Just wanted to bring up the topic.
Thank you.
I believe we're also, you have, you received, I believe, a new memo from Morris Associates?
Yes, and there is quite a few comments.
There are, but it's cleaned up a lot from the first. A lot.
Yeah.
That's called progress.
Yes, it is.
And in through there, there's three points, I believe, 411 and 12, that are all SEACR-related. The last one, I believe, is related to SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Officer, sorry, and Office. I keep, we speak in acronyms up here, I apologize. And then the other was the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, so I know you, you guys are working on that to bring it forward. Anything else you want to add about changes to the project in the meantime?
Just one more thing, that will be part of the supplemental bundle submission next, at the end of next week. When TRC, the engineering consultants, were on the property, they did notice a minor extension to one of the wetlands, and so we'll be making adjustments, just some small adjustments to stormwater to just lend more accuracy to the permit.
Thank you. Wetland boundaries wander upon occasion, those that have been serving for a long time appear are nodding our heads because we require recertification of the delineated boundaries periodically. DEC would like, if they haven't been certified within five years, they'd like for us to recertify about every five to seven years. These are not DEC wetlands, in your case, they're Army Corps. Thank you. Ms. Sotero, would you want to start with comments?
Sure. Well, you covered some of them. Yeah, that's all. I think Liz's major one was, like you talked about, number four, was on the visual assessment for Peach Hill Park, so we don't need to go through, go through that. She had some comments on the decommissioning plan, adding some additional notes, and then at some point, we'll need to agree on a removal bond. And there's some other, you know, housekeeping items here, you mentioned already about the office of parks. And I had had some comments about relocating on the driveway, and those have all been addressed.
Right, that was a separate memo.
Yeah.
Prior to the new submission.
So they're fine, that's like good. I'll show it to the highway superintendent, but as long as it's moved to where he and I thought it should best be for site distance, I'm sure he'll be fine. We didn't get a chance to take a look at the stormwater pollution prevention plan, but we'll do that. I don't think we had too many, you know, major comments, I don't think that's going to be a stumbling block, so. I think a lot of the comments have been addressed, as you said, so I think, you know, the visual assessment is one of the bigger ones to remain.
Thank you. I should add that we heard back from DEC, which gave actually, for DEC, a pretty kind letter.
Yeah.
Basically stating, we don't think there are any packs, but there might be, keep looking. We also heard back from county planning, their main comment was about the impalement of the stormwater.
I don't think it's going to meet DEC dam, dam safety requirements.
Didn't seem anywhere near DEC dam safety requirements in terms of the volume that you're going to hold. I'm not sure why that was put in there, except that it is on a slope, maybe? He was concerned?
It was a slow day or something, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Paul Drow, any comments?
No comments, just wanting to add additional information.
Thank you. Let me start to my left, Ms. Weiser, any comments?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Murphy?
I just want to work with the viewshed thing. A little work for me.
Mr. Pickett?
First comment was, working on the viewshed, and that's being addressed already. The second one was, is the fire district going to be reviewing this? They're concerned about.
Yeah, we had that in there in our comment, that, have you guys been in contact with the fire department?
I was going to bring that up, that we are actively pursuing a meeting with the fire department, which will actually be my role, because on the New York zoning team, I'm the token volunteer firefighter. So I'll be speaking directly to the fire department, and what I usually do when I speak to a fire department is I walk them through the emergency response plan, and just page by page, making sure they can provide feedback or answer, or ask any questions. I also provide the site plan, so that they can see the access road and kind of determine the ingress and egress of their vehicles. And all the departments I've spoken to, they've all approved, and what I'll do is I'll get a confirmation letter that signs their approval and submit it.
Okay, good, because you've got about, what, 10 acres?
Yeah.
You have grasslands or so, and the entrance is going to be obvious, I think, but whatever they might think, access going through in case of grass fire or anything, or trying to control anything.
Of course.
Okay.
Jeff Scala, I believe is the person who's reviewing it now for Roosevelt Fire Department, Jeff Scala, that should be who you contact. And Ms. Whitman will have his contact information, at least his email.
Perfect, that's the hardest part of this, is volunteer fire departments, usually they're volunteering elsewhere, but I'll get the contact information.
Great. Ms. Dexter?
I just had a question, there's been a lot of materials submitted, and I know we've talked about this, so just, you might just need to refresh my memory. It's about the interconnection agreement, the actual final hook-in with our utility company. So, and I guess this question is kind of to our legal counsel and to our engineer, do we need to see anything from the utility saying that an interconnection agreement has either been applied for or is approved, or is that a building department issue, or? Because this is very different from a regular solar installation.
I know that answer. I think I know that answer. You won't get, the utility, the utility company, in this case, Central Hudson, is not required to tell them right now that the interconnection is possible. They give you a kind of map where there's a big line, where they've discovered that there's capacity, but then when it gets down to the granular level about whether it's at this particular location, they won't do it until they've received approvals from a planning board.
So our law doesn't require that interconnection letter, so the applicant's proceeding at his own risk?
And for every project with Cypress Creek, we do the due diligence, initial due diligence before, and we go through, we actually do an inter, we have an interconnection agreement, we, there's an interconnection study to verify the feasibility, and only after we do that do we actually proceed forward to the project. So I wouldn't be here unless we've done, gone through that process.
The solar conference I attended, that's Sina Hudson sponsored here, with the Wallace Center, they indicated that there weren't, Anne was there, they indicated that there were actually not that many that were approved. I mean, they may go through the planning board approval, but then they didn't get the final approval with the utility company. So that's, we were told at that meeting was that the, there were four steps that the state regulators have been requiring, and that the utility companies were only sort of in the middle of stage two, I think it is, identifying specific locations for hookups. So, if you've already done that work, great.
Yeah, I mean, the closest example of where we've gotten approval and we're actually currently in construction is in Kingston. There's the Bluestone Solar Project is located there, and it's actually currently in construction. You can go there and actually see some of the work being done.
So you have approval right now to connect to the grid?
We've gone through the interconnection study to verify the feasibility.
For this project?
For this project, yeah.
Okay, so it is proceed at your own risk, and we do not, in any of our requests for information and materials. To me, this is kind of like a, it's like a highway work permit or a, you know.
DOT approval or County Health.
Exactly, and I've just never had a, we haven't asked to see any of the materials. I'm just putting it out there.
That's a very good comment.
Thank you.
Well, it is, actually.
I mean, I guess theoretically, someone could put up panels without connecting to a grid.
And that's kind of my, that's.
From a land use perspective, you know, it's the same use whether they're connected to the grid or not.
Yeah, right. Self to none.
Well, yeah, I guess land use.
I could say it's proceeding with its own.
In the words of our laws, at your point, I run an ordinance at your point, it wouldn't make a difference, but we would want to know that.
Actually, if the board doesn't mind, from, we have some people from the Cypress Creek headquarters here tonight, all flown in, all the way from Santa Monica, and Jeff Johnson, he could actually answer some of these questions directly about interconnection, so.
Just make sure you speak into the microphone, please, you're being broadcast.
And we think it's very, we think it's very.
Thank you, thank you for coming in for this.
Yeah, no, thank you for having me. To follow up on Brian's comment regarding the interconnection agreement, it's something we need to know that we're able to build this project, that the grid can take this energy onto the project. Because it's a substantial investment. So we do this very early on to do those feasibility studies, and we have an interconnection agreement with the utility, and we can provide that documentation to clarify that.
But for another project?
No, for this project.
Oh.
Yeah. I'm curious a little bit about the feedback that you heard at Sina Hudson, perhaps it was related to larger policy that state regulators are working on, but as far as.
Yes, the individual who gave that part of the plenary session was actually, if I can put it mildly, somewhat bitter when he made his comments about how much money he'd spent for how few he'd actually got approved by the utility by the end. So, he'd been starting for a while, I believe, and we had a presentation some, by the same panel, there was a young woman from, an engineer from Central Hudson, who said, "We're working on trying to get to the granular level, but we're not there yet. That's this next phase we're going through throughout this state." They were all talking about the governor's goal for, I believe, 50% by 2000, no more than me, for renewables. 2023, 2000?
2030.
2030, that's it, yes. And the course was actually, a lot of the panel session was that, we're not going to get there with just solar, we're going to need wind, et cetera, in it, so. Ms. Weiser and I took the, went to the all-day training session, really just because of this new law that we have here, we thought it would provide more information, and we thought it did, because I kept saying, "Why wouldn't you know, before you proceed spending money for a planning board, why wouldn't you have some assurance that you're going to get this?" And they said, "Utility's not obligated to tell us until we get a planning board approval."
Okay, and that makes sense to me. So you have done the legwork to find out if it's physically possible.
That's correct.
To do this, because there are many, many places where it's not physically possible without building at your own substation, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
So you have done that part, and so the part I'm talking about is then the paperwork from the utility.
Yeah, and one follow-on comment, part of the feasibility study is identifying upgrades that need to happen to the grid in order for the project to proceed, and that is a substantial upfront investment that we have to make. So when we make that investment, which we've made for this project, we have to identify the path forward from a zoning perspective, from a site feasibility perspective, so we make that in good faith to say, "We're serious about the project, we know that the utility can take this on."
Excellent, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Worth flying in for.
Actually, I knew all that, but Jeff has been envious about talking to, I mean, he's sitting at a desk most of the time, I think he's secretly envious of the chance we get to actually talk directly to the board, so that was a dream come true for Jeff.
Oh, well, good.
Mr. Oliver?
That was a very, very good question, Anne, thank you. No, I would just like to add about the viewshed, I agree, I think that the white pine would be a good solution to help screen that area, and other than that, I'm looking forward to get some renewable energy in the area.
You'll point that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Napoli?
I'm going to hold any comments I may have until I hear from the public, but at this moment, I do not have any.
And that is fine. If you guys don't mind relinquishing the table for a moment, I'm going to call some individuals who signed up. And by the way, you're welcome, after I call those individuals who signed up, anyone can speak, just make sure you state your name for the record afterwards. The first person who signed up is Tom Myring. Mr. Myring, come on up. For the record, Mr. Myring submitted written comments today that we were just, I think, just received.
Correct. I'm Tom Myring, I'm the Recreation and Parks Director for the Town of Poughkeepsie, and some of you may remember me from about 20 years ago when I was Recreation Director here in Hyde Park.
Yeah.
I'm glad to be back in town hall. I am very interested in this project because of the impact potentially on Peach Hill Park. I want to give you a little bit of information about Peach Hill. I'll move down, I suppose, to some of the more important parts, I had a full thing prepared for you, but Peach Hill is very, it's probably the most active park we have. We have a car counter at the entrance, and last year, we had 11,000 cars enter the park.
Wow.
So it's very well-used, used primarily for walking, for hiking, for bird watching. We have, it's seen 150 species of birds up there, and a lot of people just go there for the serenity. Peach Hill, even though it's in the Town of Poughkeepsie, is actually right on the border of the town and Hyde Park, so we are your neighbor, very close neighbor. We have three and a half miles of hiking trails in the park, and by the way, if you've gotten lost up there, I was up there later this afternoon.
It can be confusing, I'll admit that myself.
We are working on that.
That's okay, it's kind of fun.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll need to get out.
We have three and a half miles of hiking trails, they are designated Hudson Valley River Greenway Trails. And the overlooks were mentioned, probably the most important one in our mind is the Catskill Overlook, which I'm not sure is the one that you visited. Did you see the Catskill Overlook?
Yeah, I did, there was, there was two of them. I was, I was just, there was the recommendation, I think there was two of them.
Correct, okay. Okay, the Catskill Overlook has a vista all the way from North and South Lake, up near Catskill, down to New Paltz, and it, on a clear day, you can see 40, 50 miles into the Catskill Mountains. The proposed solar farm, the overlook looks down on the proposed solar farm. It's about 170 feet lower than the overlook, and it's a half mile away. So to put that in some perspective here, for people from Hyde Park, it's like standing at the Vanderbilt Overlook and seeing down across the river, or standing at the Mills Mansion front, the Mills Mansion and the Sopis Metals Lighthouse. It's the same kind of distance and the same kind of distance, it's the same kind of distance and elevation change. I'm very interested in the white pine potential for screening, I think that could solve a lot of the problem, and I'm very pleased that you're looking into screening, I think that would be something that would be very appropriate in this case.
Well, particularly from a site that has designated Greenway Scenic Trails, et cetera, and is used by that large amount of the community. I don't want to throw rain on anyone's parade, but I do have to say that, I mentioned this in a meeting, a small meeting with a non-corm number of planning board members, there are other intervening structures in some of the vistas, there's a water tower, I think, in one, so, they're not, in other words, completely pristine, but they're still pretty gorgeous, I have to admit. And there's only one where you see the water tower, when I saw it, I thought, "Ugh, take that out, carve it out."
You can see from the.
It serves its purposes as well, yeah, for better for people, so sometimes you have to do things like that, but screening is both required by the solar law that we adopted, or the town adopted last year. It's also, screening is always required between residential and non-residential uses, so it's the degree of opacity that's up to the planning board, and we try to make sure that there's, that there's real true screening, even during leaf-off seasons, which is why we recommend evergreens. We often recommend a mix of spruces, firs, and pines, that way you have different heights of screening throughout the year. So maintenance is also, of course, important, but I don't think that for the life of what, we've been told that solar panels, we're not sure what the life or the length of, the expectancy is for efficiency. Some of the original panels, I believe in Boston, are still operating and producing energy that were installed, but typically, they may run 25 years. There are other parts, the converter, that tend to wear out more quickly than the panels themselves, so. And Mr. Oliver told me that he'd finally seen a big seller farm and was shocked at how big it was when he saw it. I've seen several at different parts around the nation, and one of the reasons why screening became so important, another seller representative was, heard this, there's a, there's a ground mount on 9G, just, yes, everyone's laughing, it's on a farm, it's, it's an area that you would say is particularly bucolic or rural and pretty, and the gentleman who had it installed for the company said, oh, well, he was making a real statement there, but when we were passing, when the town board was discussing the law, we had a lot of neighbors come out saying, "It can't look like that!" Because it's a cement base, it's not, it's not really mounted the way they mount now, and it's not even that big, but it's right there on 9G, and it kind of interrupts your view of a pretty countryside, so.
I think I know the one you're talking about.
I think you do, if you live around here, you're going to know what I'm talking about. So that's one of the reasons why screening was added specifically in the law itself, plus within the residential versus non-residential uses. So once we have more visual, a better visual analysis, we'll be able to determine exactly what needs to be done.
Right, very good. I definitely would offer, if anybody would like me to go along with them up there to look, I'd be willing to take a tour.
I'd love to do a hike, we all did a site visit on Sunday, or not all of us, but a majority of us did a site visit on Sunday, at another location that took us about two hours, and I know this is going to take, it takes about two hours. So I think to really see all of it, if you want to go through more of the trails, but you can make it in probably under an hour, if you just want to see the vistas we're talking about. So, was that me to contact Mr. Myring, try to arrange a site visit?
Yeah.
To Peach Hill Park? Okay. I think, did you give us your email on the letter? I don't remember.
I can give you my card.
That would be perfect, that way I can try to set up a session by email.
Okay, good. And I also, while I'm here, we have several members of the Friends of Peach Hill, and I'd just like to recognize them for the work they've done to the park.
Please do.
In the front row here, we have Jim Charlie, Bill Lunt, Jennifer Kennel, who's our president. Behind Bill is Mary Lunt, and Scott is my bad brother. Scott O'Kirk, thank you.
I commend you, it's a great site. I was not able to be there when anything was in bloom, I kept wanting to be, but the first time was snow in the ground still because we had such late snow, and the next time, it was blazingly hot on a Sunday morning, go figure, not too far afterwards. But I've also, in full disclosure, I know the Lunts socially, and Ms. Lunt met me at one point up there and said, "Okay, now it's your turn to talk while I walk." Because in the steeper parts, but it's a beautiful site, so thank you for coming in. Anything else to add?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. And the next person who signed up was?
Hey, Tom, which one of these is the Catskill?
Hey, Tom, which one of these is the Catskill?
It's Bill Lunt. I take it...
That one right there?
Gina and Jessica Gunch crossed out, signing. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
The one that's on the same level as the summit.
Okay. To the left of the summit.
Yeah.
My name is Bill Lunt. I'm the, I am a member of the Friends of Peach Hill, which is a nonprofit group, which has, was, was more or less founded about 25 years ago to manage Peach Hill and to actually promote it for, use it as a part before that was the case. And just a personal note, I drive an electric car. So I am delighted to have, to have, to know that it's more likely that the power that I plug into will be generated by electric, by electric panels. What I want to do actually is just basically second everything that Tom has said. The, I've had the experience of, of leading people, escorting people up Peach Hill, and who haven't been there before. And it's interesting, I carefully make sure I get them high up. And when they get high up, they're, they just sort of open up and say, "Wow, I didn't know this, this even existed." And it's especially when they are looking at the west, looking west from Peach Hill Park, at the view which, which we're talking about. So view is enormously important. And we, we realize that. And a lot of what we've done has been to emphasize that, that view. The, and that's basically all, all I want to emphasize to you. I'm delighted to hear that the, there is, that that screening is a major consideration on your part and on the, on the part of the Cypress Creek. And I would just like to urge you to take, take seriously the, the effort to make sure that you, we screen this appropriately, appropriately. And I think that's basically what I, what I want to say. I just want to emphasize, kind of second everything that Tom has already, already said. And just urge you to, when you're making your, your considerations, to consider especially the issue of, of screening.
Thank you.
If I can brag a moment, this board takes everything very seriously, I assure you. You can ask some other applicants who come periodically, the details we get into. There's, there's one over there! I mean, we have discussions about colors of paint and trim. So it's a serious board, but we're going to do our best, I promise you, to make sure that we can balance the needs of the applicant, along with the needs of residents who utilize this wonderful scenic resource. Thank you, Mr. Lunt.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak about this application from the public? I also want to go on record and say that the applicants, Cypress Creek, have been very, give and take, very forthcoming, whatever we've asked for. Sure, here, a past representative even suggested a visual impact analysis, but I want to go up before we, to find out what the viewpoints where we want to have them take a look from, which is always important when we do a visual impact analysis. So, Mr. Stump, if you guys want to come back up? Excuse me.
More screen time.
Sorry, my thread, the pollen. So I believe you heard a majority of people up here, including me, discuss the importance of the visual impact analysis, what that will reveal in terms of additional potential screening. We have not discussed with you yet the, excuse me, decommissioning plan and the bond. Ms. Axelson says to discuss that. This is our first time to use this law, you're the first ones through the pike. So, and I'm reading the law, it's basically states that there has to be a decommissioning plan, and that there should also be a performance guarantee or bond. It also then, more or less states that the board can waive placement of the bond. The reason I wanted to discuss this is, I believe your lease is 25 years or 30 years or something like that with Mr. Baxter?
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
With option to extend.
Performance guarantees, they don't stay in full operation all that time. So...
Someone would have to track it for...
We'd have to track it for 20 years to make sure that it's staying up. So I just want the board to remember this.
Usually, usually what happens when we accept a bond on, you know, something else, that they're usually for a one-year, you know, period. And then every year, normally, the bond company would send a letter to the town clerk, saying, "Hey, we got this bond. Do you want us to, like, renew it?" And, you know, hopefully, you know, the municipality has a tracking system.
Okay. This is just for the board to consider. Again, we typically have performance guarantees for completion of major infrastructure.
Right.
In this case, it's a performance guarantee that if the, if they cease the business, that somehow it doesn't just sit there and become rotting hulks. I'm not sure else to describe it. So the performance guarantee, whatever it is, letter of credit, bond...
I believe the law also allows, as part of the decommissioning plan, for the town to...
Yes.
Remove the panels themselves and then place it...
A lien on the taxes.
A lien on the property.
For the owner.
In lieu of a performance bond.
For the performance bond. So again, this is our first time through. I believe that Mr. McIlwain had asked some questions of the town attorney. That I was fortunate to be copied on, as was Victoria, as was Ms. Whitman. And I didn't see much guidance offered by the town attorney there. They let the planning board finish it all up and then come see me. So...
It would basically be a condition of approval. We would recommend, we would recommend proposed language to the town board, and then they would take it on after this board approves the project.
Okay. And that also would pertain to the pilot or the payment in lieu of taxes. That's also required as part of the solar law itself. When would you like for us to set the next public, or adjourn the next public hearing to? What date would you like? If you're going to be making a submission in two weeks, do you want, we don't have a July 4 meeting, that would be the first Wednesday in July. So we have, our next meeting would be June... June 20th? June 20th, and then July the 18th. Thank you. Good math.
I would say June 20th, if I could make the recommendation.
When do you expect to have the new materials?
No, later by the end of next week. Probably by, do you want to buy, when do you want it? For the June 20th?
Technically, the due date would be yesterday.
Yesterday.
We're supposed to have two weeks to review. The reason I'm asking is, I know you're interested in proceeding, but every time we have a public hearing, you're paying escrow costs, or through escrow, you're paying for attendance, et cetera. And if we have new materials we're waiting for, including a visual impact analysis, if it's, would you submit the visual impact analysis at the same time?
I can, actually, we can submit that vision analysis, yeah, within the first, by tomorrow or the next day. I mean, we have a Viewshed analysis that I just wasn't able to print for tonight, that I could provide. And we can go a little further into, like, showing the Peach, Peach Hill Park viewpoints that I've collected, and try to indicate where we think the project is and why we...
We were thinking about a photo simulation of just popping in.
Something like a visual rendering, like a before and after? Okay.
That's usually what we request.
That will, that'll be a little bit more time. It'll be tomorrow.
It means cutting and pasting the solar array into whatever picture you have where the site can be seen. Having been up there several times, I know I can, I mean, I could see the foundation rubble without binoculars. And I'm old and don't have very good eyes anymore. So I know you can see it from various spots there. If you have, if, if you didn't see any spots where you could see it at all, then I would need to somehow GPS coordinate the shots where, the spaces where I've seen it.
Well, we can give them this map, and you can just go to that site.
I think he, I think he tried to look for that site at where the binoculars were shown and didn't see it from...
Well, he took it from the summit, I think.
Right.
Where the other, the site nearest the summit is where Tom stated, see most vision.
And I can even...
We should work from there.
Yeah, I can even, with the camera I used, I could even give you the exact GPS coordinates.
It might be that we can identify some spots when we do a site walk with Mr. Myring. And I'm personally available this weekend, so I'm going to try to start this weekend. Nope. Diana, would be very hard for you to walk that side, believe me. There's a couple of steep hills on it that are fun and challenging, but not for the, not for people with any kind of physical injury there. So, so the reason I'm saying this is, we can set, we can adjourn this to the 20th. We may not have much to discuss if the consultants and my colleagues and I have not had much time to go through everything. It's up to you. I usually take the time, I have the time usually to go through everything, but I'm one of the few who's ancient, retired, there's still working people up here.
We'll try our best to submit everything we can by middle of next week.
Okay. Then let me get a motion to adjourn this to June 20th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming out, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Hey, Jim.
I will have my email in tow.
The next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Carriage Trails. This was a project firmly known as Crofton Muse. This is a request for a two-year extension of site plan to complete construction. This is located at 1269 Route 9G. Make it a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. So in essence, if all of us on the board know this, but maybe someone in the audience doesn't, this site was purchased by the same individuals or the same partnership team behind Jeffrey Groves, which is an application we're also reviewing that they made some changes to. This project has a long, long history. I believe it was first submitted in 1996.
Really long.
It was conditionally approved with something like 24 conditions at one point along the way. The applicants finally worked through all the conditions. I signed the site plan. They started, they started substantial, work on substantial construction, i.e. putting in some roads, water lines, et cetera. The economy took a tank, tanking dive during the Great Recession, and subsequently, the original applicants lost control. It was foreclosed fund by Key Bank, and now it's been sold. So while the new owners ponder what to do, whether they want to come back and make changes to the site or not, they need to make an extension because otherwise, the approval would lapse. So that's basically a quick summation of where we are. Any comments from our consultants?
No.
So I did speak to Lou Kaufman right before this meeting, and he did have some concerns about some of the language, given that he just purchased the project, and he was trying to sort out how it would impact the project. And I advised him that if he needed something amended, that he could come in and talk to the board, and that you would consider his request.
But for now, you're just transferring all the prior conditions?
For now, it's mostly a transfer of conditions that have been ongoing since, you know, 2005.
It was just carried through from owner to owner, right?
Yeah, just continuously carried through. So he may be coming in at some point to tweak the project.
Sure.
But in the meantime, this is the request for an extension.
Right. And I should add, some of these conditions are also based on deterioration of the site since they started the construction, and nothing else has happened, i.e. the landings turtle protection measures are all kind of gone. There's a bunch of things that are gone.
Right.
I will also add that during the time we were reviewing it, the project actually, I think, improved. They changed the footprints of the buildings, made them more attractive. They lost some density because of that. They also added a much better emergency access over to the neighborhood, where before, it was a huge cul-de-sac neighborhood in effect. So I understand, it's, I'm happy that someone's bought it because it's been sitting there looking like a lunar, you know, devastation over there with no trees, no nothing, where they first took everything down. Any comments or questions from the board?
No.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? They're being then making a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this resolution?
I do. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, resolution to grant a two-year extension of time to complete construction, Carriage Trail at Town Center, June 6, 2018, Resolution Number 16-96-GI. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore, it be resolved that pursuant to Section 108-9.6B of the code, the planning board hereby grants a two-year extension of the time in which the applicant must complete construction to and including July 7, 2020, subject to the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Be it further resolved that no further extensions shall be granted until and unless the stormwater pollution prevention plan has been updated with the DEC to reflect the change in ownership. An inspection escrow account has been established with the town to cover the cost of inspections by the town engineer, and the site, and site inspections occur in accordance with the Department of Environmental Conservation Regulations. Be it further resolved that, one, if and when agreement with Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority is reached relating to the water line, all legal agreements and/or documents created in connection with the agreement shall be submitted to the town attorney and planning board attorney for approval. And, two, before any disturbance on the site, including any grading and tree removal, the applicant shall submit a letter of credit or the equivalent security for the completion of roads and related infrastructure in the town, in the amount approved by the planning board upon the recommendation of the town engineer, subject to review by the town attorney, as to form, sufficiency, and manner of execution. And, three, hold on. Before any disturbance on the site, including any grading and tree removal, the applicant must, shall, the applicant shall, applicant shall repair...
Yes, we have some...
Okay. And reinstall all landings turtle mitigation measures. And, four, no building permit shall be issued until the applicant has submitted an updated SWP, SWPPP, to the town, which is acceptable to the planning board engineer and storm, stormwater management officer, and has applied for a local stormwater permit. And, five, no certificate of occupancy for the last completed structure on the site shall be issued until an as-built survey has been submitted to the zoning administrator verifying the complete implementation of the site plan. Completion of all site plan elements must be in place and verified by an as-built survey prior to the zoning administrator authoring, authorizing issuance of the CO for, for structure. That's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I didn't ask for discussion because I don't think there was going to be any on this one. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Longbard Mate Lot Line Realignment. This is...
Sorry, Jeffrey Groves. I take that back. Jeffrey Groves.
This is another application, where, as I explained last time, it may seem convoluted, but the applicants are before us for a site plan amendment, however, because they're changing some of the project. However, the original site plan is about to expire, and they can't amend an expired site plan. So the same applicants have requested a one-year extension for all deadlines to start, this is to start substantial construction. Make it a motion of the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any comments from the consultants? Comments from the board?
No.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? Please come on up. I recognize you now.
Yeah, I know. Everybody who plays Monopoly recognizes me. My name's John Trubish, 25 Hollow Ridge Road, Statsburg. Just want to know two things. Number one, what's, when is the earliest they could begin construction on this thing? Any ideas?
I don't really have an answer for that because the...
That's great.
They would need, they would, they would need, they need approval from the Department of Health and Department of...
Yeah, they need approvals, they need approvals from Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority to extend other water line, and also other sewer plant, along with that Dutchess County Health Department for the sewer plant, the approval from the County Public Works Department for the access. We're still, we're still going through some things. I mean, if you had to go ask me, I would probably say next year, at the earliest.
Yeah. It's not going to happen this year, I don't think.
Oh, really? But within a year?
I would think so. Depends on, so the biggest issue is the sewage treatment plant. The original one that they, that was proposed and approved, I guess we'd call it maybe the Cadillac or the Mercedes-Benz of sewage treatment plants. And one of the reasons why this project never started was the upfront costs for that kind of infrastructure were so high that they didn't think they could get the money out from, back when they were going to be for-sale townhomes. They're not proposed to be... They're not proposed to be rentals, so they could be constructed all at one time, and I know from other positions I sit on, we're told all the time that the county has a lack of rental housing. So, I think they're trying to strike while the market's hot. But the change that they're proposing in the wastewater treatment facility, that structure, that's approved by both Water and Wastewater Authority as well as Department of Health.
Yes.
And that's what's been dragging things along. I mean, they've been discussing this change from going from nine single-family homes to twelve townhomes on one portion of it. They first- I think we first discussed this two years ago, and they didn't move because they were so far behind with Department of Health. I don't know how far they've moved along.
All right, the second thing is, can I get a plan diagram of the planned construction?
There is- everything is online.
It's in the back?
If you go to our website, it's online.
Do we have a sample back here?
We have a public version, but it's not one you can take.
Right, we have a public version, but it's not one you can take.
But you can look at it in the back.
Right, but if you want- no, if you want one for yourself, then you need to- I'm sorry to have to do it this way, but it's for records keeping. We have to do it this way. You would fill out a FOIL, a Freedom of Information Act.
Slow down. What?
Oh, sorry. I'm a fast speaker. If you want your own copy of it, you would complete a Freedom of Information Law application to the town clerk. It doesn't take that long.
It's just a one-page form.
Yeah, and then they'll ask- they'll send it over to our depart- our office.
And there's a charge.
There's a charge for the copies of it, and that's it.
I have to send them out to be printed.
Right, we-
It's too large for us to print.
We don't have a copier at Town Hall that can do number- things that size.
I'll just take a look at the one.
Okay, it's also online. It's online- it's also online on the Hyde Park website, Town website.
Oh, okay.
HydeParkNY.us. If you go into the planning tab, it'll show you what's online, and Ms. Whitman, our secretary, puts everything online. So, you can actually see a couple of iterations of this project, how things have changed already just when we started reviewing it.
All right, thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. You can also- sir, you can also come in during business hours, and Ms. Whitman will clearly take out the big-
Oh, terrific.
And you can look at it then, too.
Right.
Very good. Thank you kindly.
Would anyone else like to speak about this application? There being no other comments, make it a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and who has this resolution?
It'd be me. Resolution to grant one-year extension of all deadlines pursuant to section one oh eight, nine point six of the town code, resolution number sixty-eight dash twelve F. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants a twelve-month extension pursuant to section one oh eight, point six of the code, and the time of the applicant must commence substantial construction to and including June fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and the time in which to complete the construction to and including June fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, my colleagues. The next item on the agenda is Lombard Mate Lot Line realignment. This is in effect a minor subdivision under our code. They're just moving a lot line between one seventy and one seventy-two Roosevelt Road. As we discovered during the initial review of the application, both owners thought they already had control of each site because of the way the topography goes. So, I don't see any reason to ask you guys to come up here. Make it a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And comments from the consultants, any?
Yeah.
Ms. Paladaro?
There are a few conditions of approval. Mostly technical in nature, adding zoning table.
And I believe- I believe there we know these, because Ms. Axelson actually sent you just exactly what we wanted.
Oh, okay, so no surprises.
No surprises, and if you want a copy of the resolution tonight, okay, perfect, thank you. Any comments from the board?
No.
No.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? Going once, twice, three times, make it a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this resolution?
I do. Resolution to grant subdivisions- to grant subdivision approval, Lombard slash Mate and Boland Lot Line all duration. Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-two A. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the requested waivers. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the subdivision plat that authorizes the chairperson or has authorized designee to affix his or her signature to the subdivision plat after compliance by the applicant with the following conditions. Payment of all fees and escrow. Revision of the subdivision's plat schedule of bulk regulations table as follows. A, addition of the following note. Lot thirty-nine's front yard setback is a pre-existing non-compliant condition. B, addition of actual values for all parentheses, front, comma, side, comma, rear, and the parentheses, of the one shed setbacks for both lots for existing and proposed conditions. C, addition of the following note. The one shed setbacks are pre-existing non-compliant conditions. D, addition of values for each lot's maximum average density. Three, revise subdivision plat to depict the location of existing iron rods on the northern and southern ends of the proposed lot line. Four, permission to file from the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health. Be it further resolved that prior to the issuance of a building permit for any improvement on lot thirty-nine or forty-one as shown on the subdivision plat, proof of-
Recordation.
Recordation, okay. Of a deed conveying zero point zero six six acres from lot thirty-nine and merging it with lot forty-one shall be submitted by the zoning administrator. Second.
Any further discussion? Just real quickly. The reason why that's in there is just in case that there's proposed to be a building on either structure. We want to make sure that the lot line revision's been recorded so that we don't wind up approving somehow a building on somebody else's property.
Well, there's- there've been cases where people have forgotten to record, and then there's a little piece hanging out in nowhere, no man's land. It's not part of either lot.
So, it's just a sort of fail-safe we do because we discovered that there's a lot of messy records, kind of like you guys have. At Town Hall, so we're making sure that from now on, we proceed forward with something clean, ready to go.
What's number four? Tell me about number four.
Oh. It's the Department of Health.
They've changed their name. They've been merged, so it's- it's-
Oh, oh. I thought we were gonna send this all to be shrunk up. Okay, now I understand.
New department name.
Yes, yes. It was part of the shrinking of government or the sharing of services. Take your pick.
Yes, okay.
Government shrank, but the name's got longer.
So, we have a motion. We have a motion that's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Sorry it took you this long. Good luck. Okay, the next item on the agenda. A new public hearing for the Locusts Rural Event Venue. As a reminder, the applicants are seeking site plan approval and special use permit approval for the ability to conduct rural events such as weddings or fundraisers, et cetera, on a site located at variously eighty-three Penny Lane, one thirty-five Old Post Road, thirty-four Strawberry Fields Lane, all in Statsburg. And this is the Locusts where we all did a site walk on Sunday. And, well, first, make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Vental, do you want to come up and say anything?
We missed you.
Yes, you didn't get to walk the site with us.
I'm sorry I missed it. Actually, I was working.
I'm surprised.
Yes. I just want to confirm my letter. I've requested that the public hearing tonight be continued until your next meeting, for all purposes.
And just so for the audience's edification, we're pretty close now to considering approval, like, really close. We just have a couple of outstanding items. I counted three now, thanks to someone's excellent sense of hearing. I'm looking at Cynthia. First, we have the issue of the bridge, but I'm gonna let Mr. Sotero address that based on our site walk. Second would be the letter from the neighbor that I believe is still unresolved. He has to grant permission or grant an easement, take your pick. I believe you've seen the draft resolution we had, where I think you've seen it, maybe not.
Yes.
So, we kind of neatly handled that by saying that if no easement is granted, if he grants permission, then the permit's valid. But if he at some point doesn't, then the permit is void automatically. He'd have to tell us he's withdrawing it somehow, some way for that to occur. The last issue that I see is Mr. Scala, who's the head- he provides comments for Roosevelt Fire Department, which, as you know, is merging or taking over Statsburg. In his comments at the May public hearing, he noted that there was one concern. There's a stump that we saw. It's sticking out of the ground about yea-high. It's probably about that round. So, maybe two, two-and-a-half feet in diameter. It's where the emergency access-
It's on lands of Shoals.
It's on lands of Shoals, and his concern was that that needed to be ground up and removed. We're not sure how to accomplish that because that would be requiring an off-site improvement. Just wanted to bring it up, however. We did note that there's plenty of room for a fire truck to move around that stump, but we were worried that if it was dark and they couldn't see.
Right.
You weren't there to see it. I don't know if you know what we're talking about, so, but I'll- I'll send out an email as well, just to Mr. Didio as well, to have them take-
That's what I was gonna say. I'd mention it to Andy.
Yeah, I talked- I pointed it out to him, and he said, "We could do that." And I thought, "Oh, wait, but it's not on your land, so..." Maybe they can work that out with Mr. Shoals as well as part of the agreement. That noted- Mr. Sotero, any comments?
Oh, yeah, if I could just address the bridge. So, Andy and I had a phone conversation on Monday with Harvey Shumpert. Harvey is with Amtrak, who leases- who leases the tracks from CSX. And what Amtrak does yearly is they do a visual inspection only of the overpasses over the tracks, obviously. And the visual inspection is nothing more than pretty much what we or I did when I was there, like, on Sunday, was, "Do you see anything that could be a potential hazard to, you know, a train, anything hanging off, anything looks like it's gonna fall down?" And then, if they do see something that is of a concern, they have a process. They report it to CSX, and CSX then is responsible for taking action. So, Amtrak does not do any kind of a structural inspection. However, Andy had provided me literature from the CSX website where they have- where they go through the protocol or, you know, their process where they do do every year and a structural inspection of all the overpasses that they are responsible for. So, we know from the information that the applicants had provided that CSX is, you know, responsible, you know, for this bridge, that they're responsible for maintaining it in a condition, I believe, for emergency access. So, which would-
The condition would be on this one for all the regular uses that go on at the side, including guests, all of them.
Emergency.
So, so, having- having said that, and, you know, the fact that there are two agencies that do look at this, you know, the best scenario is that we were able to get a copy of an inspection report from CSX. However, if anybody has worked with CSX before, it is very, very difficult to try to get something out of their main office. It's down in Philadelphia, and they have a long protocol to go through just to get, you know, like, release of these reports, blah, 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 blah. So, I told- I told Andy that before the twentieth, if there was an opportunity, if he could track down somebody down there to be able to have a similar conversation, you know, a conference call that we had with Harvey, just to say, "Yes, we inspect it every year. We have inspected it." You know, that would be, you know, the best. But absent of that, knowing that it's difficult to reach people down there and get to the correct person, I feel- I feel comfortable, having seen, you know, the bridge, that it's in pretty good condition, that I don't really- I don't really foresee it as any kind of a problem. So, if we can get this conversation before the twentieth with CSX, fine. If not, I think the information that we have so far, and I- and I wouldn't have a problem writing a letter so that we have something in the file on that. So, we're gonna try to have a conversation before the twentieth with somebody from CSX, but I'm not gonna hold my breath on it because it is difficult to track people down there.
We have been trying.
I'll bet. I've tried before myself with someone who lives down the river, when they were replacing some overhead wires. And by the time that I finally got through to someone, it was months after they'd finished. And I was- this wasn't just me, it's somebody who lives down there. It was requested by a former supervisor, Supervisor Delafield, to see what was going on.
Yeah, so.
Opaque at best, and non-responsive at worst. So, but thank you. That's important, and just for the record, I also went and looked underneath, climbing through the poison ivy and the snakes.
I didn't get any.
Oh, yes, the beautiful snake.
I did, just one bit.
Really? Oh, nice big, like, five-foot-
Yeah, black snake.
Really?
Yes, and the nice thing was is we had some young attendees. Ms. Paladaro's toddlers, well, Maximus isn't even a toddler yet, but they didn't- they weren't afraid of the snakes. They just watched it go by. None of us were. I thought, "That's pretty good."
Oh, I would've if I was up on top and saw it.
He was under the bridge when it came slithering by.
Not me.
At any rate, if you're on top of the bridge always, you're not necessarily aware that it is actually a steel bridge.
Yeah.
You can see it as soon as you're underneath it. You can also see that improvements have been made. It's been raised at some point over the years.
It's- it's in pretty good shape.
Yeah, yeah, so, thank you, Pete. Ms. Paladaro, any comments?
I did receive a phone call from Mr. Shoals's attorney today, but he had terrible service. And so, he said, "We're working it out, and he may have comments, but he'll call me tomorrow." So, it sounds like things are progressing.
Great.
Talking is good.
Let me start to my right. Ms. DiNapoli, any comments?
My question's to Mr. Sotero. How they inspect the bridge, I'm assuming that's the routine way of doing an inspection, is just by doing a visual?
Well, I guess that's- I guess that's Amtrak's part of the responsibility is just to do a visual, but CSX does a full structural inspection yearly of it. So, I don't know if that's answering your question, but, I mean, Amtrak just does it for their own-
Their own-
Their own measures and protocol that they do, like, a visual, you know, "Do I see anything that's like, 'Oh, my God, there's something hanging there. There's a piece of concrete that looks like it's gonna fall.'" But, so, between them doing, you know, their visual, and then CSX doing their, you know, yearly structural, you know, inspection.
Thank you.
I think we're- I think we're okay. Did I answer your question?
You did.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Ms. Dexter?
I just want to say that the site is beautiful, and I can see that this would be a lovely rural event venue and a great example to show others if-
Cool.
Yeah. It is beautiful.
Mr. Pickett?
No comment.
Mr. Murphy?
I get two words. Roger's Point. All right. The- the bridge is a little scary for me still because they can write anything down on paper, but, you know, look at that thing. And I'm a little concerned that, you know, maybe over the years. It's gonna unfold that, but there's really nothing we can do about it.
I think- I don't- the- the bridge to Roger's Point, is the town still trying to-
We got a letter, we got an email from Bill Hollister from Amtrak, and in January of two thousand and eighteen, Amtrak sent a letter to someone that lives on Bedar Place. I assume that they are the- well, I assume that person is the overseer of Roger's Point. I didn't recognize, you know, the name.
Commodore is the title, right.
Or whatever the- whatever the person is. So, basically saying that it's, you know, your bridge, it's private, you know, and they gave, like, research back from, you know, eighteen, whatever the heck it was. I don't know. I'm just- I'm just joking. But, I mean, from way back when, where they provided documentation that it's a private bridge, which is kind- which is kind of weird because if it goes over the tracks, you would think this would be the same case as they would- you would think this would be the same case as they would, they would want, they would want to make sure
Control it.
that it's maintained properly so that some doesn't fall down on a train. So, I don't really get it, but.
I don't either.
I think the bigger issue would not be falling on the train, but falling and then the train coming, queering forth at a high speed. And the chances of it happening exactly.
Well, yeah, okay.
It's possible, but it's more likely that it would be damaged the other way. But, so, in this instance.
And I can forward that to anybody if they're interested.
I'd love to read it.
Yeah.
In this instance, in other words, the reason why this may have fallen into such bad shape is because
Nobody was looking at it.
Amtrak is claiming that, no one's looking at it because they claim it's not their bridge.
Yeah. No, I, I, it just, it gives me concern.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, I, I don't want to, you know, read headlines and something happens to somebody and, and we're looking back at it and saying, you know, "I think we ought to go headwards, don't get me wrong."
Yeah.
There's something in the back of my head that says, "I'd love to see somebody do something."
We had a, we had a brief discussion at the sidewalk. It wasn't, when I say brief, we weren't, we were asking the applicant questions, that's it. We weren't talking amongst ourselves, but he said, both he and Andre the Architect, I'm sorry, I can't remember his last name.
Chalachov.
Chalachov.
I can't believe you forgot that.
I shouldn't be, I hate calling him Andre the Architect or anything, at any rate. He suggested.
You should try to spell it.
That they might, that they might look into using the Northern Bridge as well just to provide some sort of relief from wear and tear. But having walked it ourselves and looked at it underneath, it seemed pretty, pretty sturdy. So, at any rate, that's, that's up to the applicants. I just wanted to let you know that Mr. Didiot and Mr. Chalachov did discuss that briefly.
But that's not part of this application.
It's not part of this application, right, no, right. Thank you. Ms. Wise, or anything else?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? We can adjourn this for the June 20th, and get a motion to adjourn this to June 20th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And let's, I'm hoping we can get everything resolved on this.
We're doing our best.
I know you are too. No, 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 everyone's trying. This is, this is, again, showing the cooperation between the board, our consultants, and, you know, the applicants, so. The next item, the next item, you have to, yes, you have to relinquish for a moment, Ms. Van Taal, but we'll have you back, is Hyde Park Town Center North. Good evening. So, I want to just let the board know a couple of things that transpired today. We had a meeting, Mr. Sotero, Ms. Leibolt, myself, and Ms. Moss at the end. So, a couple of issues arose. As part of reading the Delaware Engineering Report, that comprehensive redevelopment of the Town Center that we were asked to comment on, at the, at the rear of it, any appendices, is the right way to put it, you'll see some conceptual schematics, and a couple of them showed what is generally proposed for landscaping and sidewalks in front of Building Five, which is planned to be the Emergency One building. When I looked at it, it doesn't comport at all with what the applicants proposed. They're proposing, you know, pre-landscaping, which seems nice, and adding two more trees where two are gone. But the, it looks as though, and in discussions with Supervisor Warren, Deputy Supervisor Svensson, it looks as though what they're, what the planners for, who did the first transportation assistance program, that was the sidewalks and the benches and the soon-to-be lighting along Nine, here, they'd like to, I believe, have a wider sidewalk in front of Building Five. That's actually about 24 feet, I think, from the curb's edge to the building. So, we met with Ms. Leibolt to say, "Do you guys want to try to put this in or just put in your landscaping, knowing that within two to three years it might be ripped up and removed?" One of the things that I suggested to Ms. Leibolt and Mr. Sotero agreed, and that's up to the board, though, is instead of, they can put in the shrubbery, the bushes, because some of that can be transplanted fairly easily.
Yeah.
But trees, once they get established, don't really like being.
Don't like being moved.
No. So, we were thinking of not having the additional Kwanzaa, Kwanzaan cherry tree and the additional honey locusts, glitis trichanthos and hermes planted there. So, you would just see shrubs and the two existing trees would stay until such time as, I think it's called TAP Two that they'd be working on that would extend the sidewalks, ADA compliant sidewalks, et cetera. I did, by the way, they also showed a wider sidewalk here. And by the way, the purpose of the wider sidewalks is sort of like when you're in Rhinebeck or in New York City even, where the sidewalk goes from the curb edge to the storefront itself, it encourages you to think of this as a more urban, you know, shopping environment. So, I think that's what they were thinking. But I had a minor meltdown, or southern hissy fizz, we can call it, over the idea of interrupting all this, the garden that we worked so carefully on. And they heard it loud and clear, "We're going to leave that intact." The only thing they might look at would be trying to maybe open up the stone, the entrance now is about here into the garden area. They might look at trying to open this up where there's a stone wall right now in landscaping, but that would be paid for by the TAP, the TAP grant. In the meantime, we get to enjoy this, and they're going to try to even avoid that because that's such a nice spot and you actually, it's very clear where you would walk to get into it and sit and repose, whatever. The other issue that was discussed was Mavis is going to be nearing getting a CO shortly. In the meantime, the landscaping here may not be all completed, but more importantly, under the original site plan that just had Mavis as part of it, the sidewalk here was shown running exactly along this north-south access. That's now been altered because of the way the applicants responding to us changed the parking to be more perpendicular to the building. So, they won't, if they, to get a CO, when there's just one building, they're supposed to have all the other site plan elements done, that's where our code reads. Because this would change, they would have to build a sidewalk and then immediately rip it up to do this, which seems foolish. So, and I hear people nodding around me, thank you. So, what we discussed doing was modifying this site plan so that the, the other improvements will be part of Phase Two. This would be Phase One. I'm just doing a light box, Ms. Leibolt said that she would actually do this for us, but to show what should be in site, in Phase One. Ms. Moss agreed that this could be done. More importantly, Ms. Moss also stated that if they start on, say, Building Five first or Building Four, whatever, instead of doing all three simultaneously, because two of them have tenants, she can CO each building without all of the site plan elements being done, except for whatever the last building is, all landscaping, lighting, everything will have to be in. So, that seems to be a neat solution. I discussed this briefly with our attorney today who also said, "Oh, we can phase this," before I even mentioned phasing. So, we think we have a neat solution. It'll be up for discussion with the board, but this way we could allow them to proceed without having to have a time where you can't do anything except twiddle your thumbs because the building's done and everything else is completed. Ms. Leibolt, let me turn it over to you now, sorry.
Man, you just, that was everything I needed to say.
You can just go home now.
We can go home. Yes, thank you for going through that very elaborate summary of what we did today.
You're welcome.
So, what we were proposing at the last meeting, we accomplished a lot, I think, as far as the layout and the site plan and the architecture. Michael Marsala is with Jeff's office, and he actually, he is the architect that has done all of the buildings. So, you guys can thank him. He did the Mavis building, he's doing these buildings. He's here to go over the architectural review, so we'll just put that off as a placeholder for a minute. What we had discussed today was originally, I think everyone was in anticipation of trying to finalize the approvals tonight. I think we should hopefully push that off to the June 20th meeting. In the meantime, what I would do is provide just an amended sheet that shows phasing and then an amended sheet that shows the removal of those three trees that we spoke about and anything else that we discussed today, so we can submit that to you just procedurally so everyone knows big picture where we are. I think it's important to keep everyone in the loop. Mavis is hoping to open, I think it's June 15th or June 18th. So, we're racing to try to get everything done as far as the site. That modification to the lines, you're shaking your head.
Well, our next meeting's that until June 20th.
That's okay. I, I think it's going to get pushed, but if we can do this on June 20th, it'll work. That's when they're trying to get this done. The building looks fantastic. I don't know if anyone's been inside of it, but they're really moving along. We're trying to get the plant, the wall done and get the plantings in for the, we call it Central Park. The clock is on order. I think you'll like it. They got Hyde Park put on the top of it, so it looks fantastic. I mean, it really is beautiful. So, that will help. We do have a little dilemma with respect to the lights, the parking lot lights. So, they are going to be delayed and we're going to talk to Tad. I don't know if she'll allow it or not, but to put in a temporary, depending upon where we put this line for Phase One and Phase Two, but maybe we can put in temporary lights to try to move ahead. But we'll talk to Pete and Tad about that offline.
I'd encourage, yeah, that conversation, as you discover the envelope, talk to her about what it could be. And by the way, that's what happened, these are the crooks neck, oh, they should.
The C-Lux.
C-Lux.
Yeah.
The, the lights that match most of the other side or all the other side as well, the adjoining side. They're not going to be in until June 29th, I think. They were just ordered late for whatever reason.
Mm-hmm. I think the same thing happened on the McDonald's site, too. But nonetheless, so, once that happens, we're trying to very quickly get a building permit. Michael's been great about getting the drawings done for Building Four. We want to get a building permit, the application's in. The building inspector is just waiting to issue the permit until this board grants site plan approval. So, unfortunately, we'll put that off a week. Once this building is done, it's like a 60-day turnaround, then the tenants that are in Building Five, we'll move over here and we'll start the fit up and submit our building permit application for Building Five. And then Building Three will get done. So, that's the sequence of all of the events, so hopefully those happen pretty expeditiously. So, with respect to the site plan, I'm going to give you this amended sheet or sheets. Try to address some of the concerns that you have. I think there were two questions that we had with respect to the comments that came back from the consultants. So, if I can just do those, and then if we could, since Michael's here, if we could finalize the approvals for the architecture, he has all the materials and so forth, so we can go through each of those buildings, so he doesn't have to come back next month if we can do that. So, two issues, one had to do with the striping of the crosswalks. And there's a bit of a discrepancy. Originally, when we had approved, we'll call it Phase One, the Mavis project, the striping was, there was a discussion of the code requires a different pavement texture. And we were originally talking about stamped pavement, and everyone decided that it's slippery and for a variety of reasons, we went away from that and we just did a conventional striping. The new plan had what we call the ladder type striping for the crosswalks, it looks like a ladder. But Tad and the board, I think, reminded us that the code requires the stamped pavement or some deviation from the pavement. So, we're just asking for clarification of what you'd like for the crosswalks.
So, this was responding also to a comment from Dutchess County Planning?
Yes.
That the, the ladder is high visibility style. The ladder, it looks just like a ladder. It's a rectangle with horizontal lines in it. And I think what we would do is we would be relaxing the requirement for textured pavements because it's in the, it's under, it's in zoning and under 4.5. So, we would relax that standard and instead substitute a different standard for, that we could put into the resolution. I hope, I think I saw you nod, Ms. Podora. That way, because you specifically in your response letter said, "We're looking to the board to tell us what to do."
Just tell us what to do. Yes, exactly.
Is there an agreement with that?
I guess I'm not.
I thought the agreement, the disagreement was between whether just to have the thick white like you have right now in the parking lot or whether to have the ladder.
Our code, the actual section of code that I sent to Ms. Leibolt says that it has to be a different texture of the pavement. That's how our code is written. I'd like to change that at some point because you, it is safer actually to have the stripes and it lasts longer because when you have trucks going over stamped asphalt, it smoothes it out over time. Whereas this is a high visibility and longer lasting epoxy paint, I believe.
People are used to seeing it.
Right.
I think that Morris Associates was also suggesting the ladder type, and yes, County Planning was also suggesting the ladder type.
So, are you saying that, because I know this came up in the agenda meeting, so the way our code is written, we're not able to have them do the ladder type?
No, we are, we are able because all site, well, unless something is in the bulk regulations, if it's a site plan standard, you know, a requirement, the board has the ability to relax that requirement based on unique characteristics of the site or for safety, health reasons, et cetera. In this instance, this is, I hope, one day to be one of the busiest shopping plaza sites we have. If we get a commercial sewer system, they can do a lot of infill in this, this area. So, you would want, I think, the most, the safest and the highest visibility crosswalking because you have more potential to cross to different stores, also to cross to different sites across the street, et cetera, so.
And from the agenda meeting, I thought we basically agree that the ladder.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, so we're just looking for a confirmation for you on, is ladder okay?
I think the question also is, are the texture, right?
It's supposed to be a textured texture.
And I think that's what Ann is, is looking a little, a little confused about. So, the plans originally called for stamped asphalt, so then.
Well, it was discussed, but then on Phase One, we waived, you waived that and, and we didn't go with the stamped product. It's just a conventional crosswalk.
Part of this was also because our AKRF, when they reviewed it, said, "The stamped concrete is not like stamped paint. It's, you know, physically like, like pretending to, like it's bricks or something."
I know, we have, we have, they installed this at Stop and Shop, so.
Right.
That entire plaza has that, and I think it's, I mean, I.
Working well.
It seems to be holding up well. It definitely looks to be where you should, you know, this is where you should try to walk, folks.
But the orig, I just want to make sure the original approval, the plans that you have approved that we're building now, does not have stamped pavement.
It has ladder, so we wanted this to match, so that both sides would all coordinate throughout the entire area.
Well, I just want things to be safe, so.
Well, that's the DOT spec, is the ladder, the ladder or the S. So, so we would conform with the spec for DOT if we did the ladder, which would require you to just approve a deviation or a relaxing of the requirement in your code. So, we just, I don't mean to sound sort of rude, but I don't care. I just need you to tell me what you want me to do. Either way, if you just give me direction.
What did you, what have you done so far or have you done anything?
Ladder. They're not finished, but it will be a ladder.
Yeah, I mean, right now, right now, all the crosswalks are in, no stamping, and it's just got.
Two lines.
Two lines on either side. So, we're looking to put.
Nothing across yet.
The cross lines in to make it a ladder.
Right.
And by the way, that was also our planning consultant's recommendation. Liz also suggested, along with County Planning, because they're just, the visibility is higher than seeing. I mean, I agree with you. When I go to Stop and Shop, actually, I can tell where I'm supposed to cross. I see people not using them.
Well, right.
But I see where you're supposed to cross. So, in this case, the suggestion was to tie the new crosswalks in with the existing, what we'll call Phase One, because that's what we chose. So, I for one am fine with the ladder.
Yeah.
Everyone okay? Okay, great.
Okay, the next one, the last item.
So, just to be clear, so then Joe's going to take off the reference to the stamped.
Correct. I'm going to modify that, and then the existing ones now will be finished.
And his detail shows the ladder.
We're going to keep the ladder, yeah, but not stamped, just a ladder.
Thank you.
The second question that I want to get clarified has to do with one of the comments for additional benches to be located throughout the site. And our response was, "We don't want to put additional benches on the site for a number of reasons, one of which is we invested significant amount into what we call Central Park, and we created those walls so that they're sitting walls. We really want everyone to focus in that particular area rather than put benches up where we have asphalt area and concrete area." So, I personally don't agree with it. I don't have authority to approve it tonight. They don't want to do the additional benches, and we're hoping that you guys will understand the amount of time that's been put onto the park. One of the comments was to put a bench in front of Building Five, so maybe you can incorporate that into the TAP Two grant. But this, this is extensive. Hopefully, you guys have walked over and they're starting to build the walls now. So, those are going to be sitting walls, and really, the intent is to try to get everyone over in that spot.
You're trying to guide people over to the park rather than having dispersed areas, okay. We'll have, I'll have the, each board member discuss that when we go along.
Okay. So, with that, we can move on if you want to, to the architecture. Do you want to go over, so, Michael, he'll just go through.
Sure.
Do you want to do the site plan now and finish?
Let's go through the, you've driven all the way over here from where you work.
Yes, in an hour and 20 minutes.
No, 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 we, so this is being, this is being televised, and some of us have not good hearing.
Okay, so I'll, so I'm going to start off with Building Three.
And you need to hold it fairly close.
Oh, fairly close, okay. So, Building Three is going to be first. We added the B-board signs. Our only issue is the centerpiece here. With the B-board sign, it's going to be hard to kind of mount that on that canopy. So, we want to propose an alternate, which is going to be a linear lit lightway that's underneath that freestanding aluminum letters, not a B-board back, just for the centerpiece. We could still do the B-boards for either side.
Do you mean halo lit or backlit letters?
It's not going to be backlit, they're actually lit from below.
The light shooting up?
Correct.
Can the light shoot down?
It's going to be tough.
You're going to need to discuss that with Ms. Moss. That's her interpretation of whether that would be internally lit or not, depends if the letters, I think, glow. Backlit is allowed, we changed the sign code to allow that.
What's that?
Asking if the letters are opaque, will the light shine through them?
Uh, no, they're going to be aluminum, aluminum letter still, but there's going to be a raceway underneath. It's like a three-by-three block that has LED.
Does anyone know when you go to the walkway over the, or the walkway, and you're on Washington Street where Lola's is?
Over the bridges.
And you look up at the sign that's there, and it says the walkway, that's the effect they're looking for?
Okay.
But we can, we can work it out with the pad.
It's kind of halo lit.
It's almost halo lit. I know what you're talking about. So the lights are in front of it, and it casts the shadow behind it.
Correct, yes.
What we were trying to do is, the problem is, there's no area there. Tad actually brought this up, so it was good.
Yes.
Yeah, how do you hang a sign there?
There's enough of them there to put the sign. So I asked Michael to do this, but we thought, tonight, we're outside, and thought, maybe we, on the side, we should put an alternative in case a tenant comes in, and they want to do something different than the bead, or the beadboard backer, that they can do this, we would just put it off to the side as another alternative that this board already approved, so then Tad...
Oh, I see you're giving an option, so that we...
Give an option, yeah.
This is actually something that we did for Stop &amp; Shop.
The problem, the problem is, our code says that all light has to be focused down.
Yeah, we'll figure, I, yeah.
So you'll have to talk to Tad about it.
We'll talk to Tad and make sure that whatever we, but I just wanted you to know that on Buildings Three and Four, we're just going to put over on the side and alternate so that you can have the chance to say, "Okay."
I can't see from here. Is that going to be considered roof-mounted?
No, it's, there's a, there's a little...
It's going to be on the canopy.
Okay.
That's the wooden...
It's going to be a paint-grade material, probably like a hardy.
Okay.
So this is a new plan that's going to be submitted?
No, these were already submitted. What happened was, we submitted the elevations, and Tad said, "Could you bring the same elevations, but put the signs on there?" So that you have, you...
We have them with the signs?
Yeah.
Our current elevations have signs, but they don't have the alternate signs.
Right.
How do I suppress?
So Kelly, we, the board was actually going to be bifurcating the signs from the site plan application.
Oh, okay.
But if you have a complete set, then we can include it at the next meeting.
So if you guys look at like the side elevations, you could see that, if you look at the side elevations, you're going to see that beadboard panel, that's going to be an issue on the canopy.
If not, we'll exclude it. Okay.
The bottom one?
Right here.
So is this different, this is different from what you showed us?
No, I printed the same thing.
It's different than what we got May twenty-third.
Yeah. The only difference between what was in the supplemental package and today is we added, we wanted to show you the signs. So this is just an illustration of what the signs would look like. And this was one of Liz's comments as well, from Morris Associates.
So this is what we'll call the feeds plus current building, that's immediately adjacent to the former Grand Union?
Yes.
So...
And we're still doing the cultured stone.
Right.
We're still doing the hardy.
Everything, you're just, the only thing that's changed, I believe, is just, you're going to show us materials, but just the signage, otherwise that's it.
Correct. And he has all the materials here that he can leave with you. Do you want us to go through each of those?
I, I think you should go through the other, the other, the other building very quickly, and then just, let's go through materials. So you're doing the same thing. You essentially have beadboard downlit signs on the other building, the one that's closest to Pine Wood, it's Building Four.
Yes.
But the central tenant may have a different kind of sign as well.
Correct, same issue. Yes, thank you. And then on this particular location, there is also a sign on the south end, which is the new door for the barber, correct?
I was, I was going to add, is, this is getting very picky, Un, but I know Tad, District Constructionist, is, is, is that a barber pole shown right there?
No.
Show barber pole. It's, I think it's...
It's required?
I think it's required by law, and Tad considers them advertising.
We could put it there.
Not necessarily signage, just advertising.
Put it on your plan.
Just put it on the plan.
Okay.
So show a barber pole.
Done.
Easy.
I'm pretty sure that's required by state law. I may be wrong, but I don't think they just put it out there for decorative purposes anymore.
This is the first barber shop I'm doing, so.
There's something quirky thing about that. Or you can check to make sure.
Very good.
But just add a little, that can be a condition of approval. You don't have to do it immediately, but I just want to make sure that that's shown. Because there was something, I'm looking, going, "Is that a barber pole? Is that a barber pole?"
And then same materials here.
Same materials, yeah, it's Building Three.
No, it's just like the thing holding.
Yes, right.
Now, this building, too, we have an issue on the street side. So we're not going to do the beadboard panel on that.
So who's the architect that designed this?
Crazy guy.
I know.
Yeah, crazy guy.
I'll bring him here next time.
So what kind of sign are you proposing if it's not beadboard, then? Is this...
It's going to be the aluminum letters mounted to the face of the building.
And how do you light that?
They're going to be backlit.
Okay.
We'll work it out with Tad for those reasons.
Or I could maybe work some lighting into the softet, if you want, to downlight them as the code reads.
We obviously want to make sure that the business feels as though it's happy with its signage.
Okay.
I know that they're going to be really happy by moving from the back to the front, where they're more visible. I mean, really happy. But still, it's a good signal, because this is the kind of business that visitors actually would use, too, if they had an emergency. So we'd like to make sure that the sign's visible, that's all.
Correct.
And code compliant. So whatever you think, I don't usually have, I'm not usually speaking to an architect when it comes to signs. So whatever you think would light it up the best?
I think backlit.
That's what I think, too. So in other words, it would kind of appear to float against the front, yeah, the halos against the front of the building.
Yeah, and that's why we're trying to tie that other buildings in with that canopy, that underlit lighting, that halo effect.
Got you, got you. Okay, thank you.
So when you do, we sent a draft resolution out earlier today. It had a lot of conditions. So if you are going to be redoing these and resubmitting for the next meeting, you should try to meet some of those conditions. And one of them was adding the materials and the dimensions to this plan itself.
Yeah, Kelly was saying, get the sign dimension, and we got that.
Okay, so just go through that list, so we don't have, so you don't have to keep printing. I sent it to Neil?
Okay.
Can you resend him, Ms. Leibl?
I mean, it was a work in progress.
Okay.
We're going to be working on it.
Very good, I'll get it.
Yeah, because one of the things we have to change in the resolution is the phasing, so.
Yes, correct, yep.
That's, that may be the most important thing in terms of what happens with Mavis.
Yeah, he's just, he has the materials here, just if you can show what it is.
Yeah, correct, yeah. I have the asphalt shingles that we're going to be using. It's a charcoal gray, which is going to be on probably all three, well, two of the buildings. This other one's going to be a weathered wood, tampco, but, so I don't know if you guys want to...
Did you say, so the first, the back two buildings are gray, the front building is...
Yes, it's going to be a tampco weathered wood, just like Mavis.
Okay.
Are they architectural shingles?
What's that?
Are they architectural shingles?
Yes, correct, yeah, they're an asphalt. And then, again, the stone, I didn't have a sample, but I took a picture of the one on Mavis. That's the one we're going to be using. It's a stone craft, Pennsylvania heritage.
Nice picture.
Actually, I didn't take that, the owner did. And then the signing material is going to be a, you know, one of the fabricated woods, like a hardy plank or boral, and it's going to be a shiplat. And again, here's a...
So it is going to be white?
Uh, yes.
Because I remember we had asked, and they said, "No."
We're going to keep that one white.
Know about the white.
Yeah. Who sent that?
That's good.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
We did say no.
No, you did, no.
Okay, we don't like white here?
Well, it's not...
The board made a question about the white being too stark.
It's a creamy white, yeah, it's not white, it's not stark white.
Oh, Jeff, okay.
Since we had multiple conversations going, stop, stop. Even I can't follow this. I hear four different people speaking at one time. Can I go back to the original question? Please?
It got answered.
I didn't, I didn't quite follow.
So she had asked earlier if on Building Two, Building Three?
Four.
Four.
Four has a white center.
If that was actually white, because it looked very white.
And the answer was that it was cream and stuff.
Right. And so we're looking at...
And the answer is that it is white.
It looks white to me.
Tad will be happy. She loves white. She would have everything painted white.
Okay, do we, is there, is there, do we need to change the way?
It's kind of a little gray in it.
Or is everyone okay with the way?
No, I'm okay with it. It was more a surprise that I saw it, because I was, they had said no.
I get it.
No worries.
Thank you.
Yes, so that's white inside the inner area.
And then this is just a brochure of the boral term.
So you're putting a white beadboard sign on white?
One conversation, one conversation, please, sorry.
It does, yeah, yeah. We thought, we just wanted to make the building pop a little bit back there, kind of downplay one, make another one pop.
See the color of the back of this catalog? That's the kind of color that a lot of people up here like.
The burgundy?
Mm-hmm.
No.
One man's pleasure is another man's poison.
Are we, just so we're clear, are we okay with the colors?
I believe so. Are we okay with the white? Yes?
Yes.
See, I told you, I told the earlier applicant we were detailed.
Okay, so we will make sure that all the colors, materials, I'll get that list, are on the plan.
How do you pick? You know, there's like a gazillion, gazillion.
Yeah. We get, you know, the, one of the girls in office to help us out, you know, that's usually the case.
Funny. What does that mean?
Well, they're better at picking colors.
Diana would be more than happy to take a day off to come help you.
Really?
There you go, exactly.
I'm a black and white guy, that's all I wear, so.
Okay, so I think that, we'll leave those with you, but what we'll do is, the plans that we give you will have the revision date, colors, materials, elevations shown.
And do, do review the signs, those two alternates with Ms. Moss, just to make sure that it's copacetic with her.
I'll let Michael call her.
Fun times, fun times.
Not an issue.
And we'll get it, we will get it resolved.
If she's had a chance to see these, and Ms. Whitman and I can discuss with her, so she has an advance notice, then give her, give her those.
I'll email them to you.
Yeah. So you've covered everything that I had written down in advance with one, two exceptions. One, the ZVA wanted to make sure everybody was aware that they gave the cubic volume variance, that's why we were so close, we prepared a draft resolution. And two, there's a new Morris Associates memo that you just need to address. That's not long, I think it's subsequent to, have you seen it?
I saw one that she issued the other day.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was where the benches came up and the striping.
So you've already read, you've already read through it, right?
Yes, yep.
So I just want to make sure that all comments are noted in there. One of them was that Mr. Boyce's plans don't match. I mentioned that to you this morning. They need to somehow match what's, what's going on around the site. Other than that, let me start with, Mr. Sichar, any comments?
No. No, you, we covered it all.
Hallelujah. Ms. Polidoro?
No new comments.
Ms. Weiser?
So I understand the issue with the benches. I, although I do agree, I like the recommendation that we add the tree, but especially, particularly near Building Four, which is much farther away from Central Park, so I would still like to see a bench at that location.
That would be near the barber shop?
Yeah. And then, just to, for the record, I just want to say, I disagree with County Planning characterizing the entrance accents on Building Three as southwestern. They are a classic example of Dutch Revival parapetted gables, and I believe they are appropriate for the town.
Thank you.
That was a nod toward you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I saw that comment, the southwestern one.
Yeah, with notes, like...
Well, I could just anecdotally tell you that she pitched it to a few other planners in the office, and they all went, she said, "What does this remind you of?" And then she would hide it, and they all went, "Alamo."
It's okay, we still love you.
And by the way, having visited the Netherlands, I saw exactly those all over Amsterdam. That's the original Dutch root architecture. Mr. Murphy?
It doesn't happen very often, but I was thinking exactly like Ms. Weiser on the bench. One bench towards the back, so that people are waiting for a ride or something like that.
Or a haircut.
That might be nice.
We can show you where we think it should be. Mr. Pickett?
If you read the resolution, it lays it out in detail.
Right.
I can only imagine.
Mr. Pickett?
I agree with the two on my left with regards to the bench. The other comment that I had was, um, on the sign that you're going to have uplit a little bit, is there, there's concerns about...
Oh, how far it's going up?
Is it boxed on top?
So, I mean, if you've got LEDs on the bottom?
No, it's not boxed on top, it just, it's not strong enough to project all the way up. You're not going to, it's not going to look like a fair, you know, where the lights are going back and forth all the way up.
I'm just concerned about getting through the planning.
Yeah, it's light trespass, light pollution.
Yes.
You'll need to angle it such that it really doesn't, I mean, this is the thing with LEDs, it can provide a nice glowy light. It can also create real hotspot pinpoints. It depends on what bulbs you order, et cetera. So should we want to make sure that, because our code requires that it's dark sky lighting whenever possible. We just like down lighting preferred.
It's either having it at an angle, or I was thinking, if it's, if it's going to be, if there's a top to that box.
Well, the box is three by three, and it has a transparent top on it, and the letters sit on that box. So we could put those letters back a little bit and maybe angle those LEDs inside, so they're not going straight up.
Okay, thank you. Great comments, Mr. Pickett. Ms. Dexter?
Okay, so I would concur, for all reasons previously stated, for a bench outside of Building Four nearest the barber shop. I would actually also advocate for a tree if there's going to be a bench.
We don't want to put a tree there because there's a number of underground utilities, and the septic system is right there.
That's the problem.
I thought the septic system was in the back.
Nope, there's septic system. There's, it goes out the back and then comes around to the front, and all the sewage pits are right there.
That's where, that's where you want to be, Kwanzaa Cherry?
No, that's on the other side of the building. That's on the north side of the building.
Which is there now, I think.
Right.
Okay. But I do want the bench. I also had a question. Signage, Verizon. What's their sign going to look like? I mean, we were, you know, when Mavis came in and said, "Gotta be Mavis-y," we said then, "Design unity. You must now think of design unity." And they said, "We're going to go Mavis-y." So how are we going to do that with a Verizon?
We've gone back and forth and back and forth with Tad on this issue. I've personally gotten involved, because what happened is Verizon submitted an application to
Right.
the town for the sign. And Tad appropriately, she had reached out to me and said, "We need design unity." And at the time, what Michael had proposed on all of the buildings was that halo type of letter. It's more of an industrial-looking type of letter. And after speaking with Tad, he had designed the design unity plan for the signage from the Mavis building. And I spoke to the client, and they like the beadboard backer. And so that's the design unity for the project. That is, all of the signs are on the, and that's why we showed this to you tonight. So all the signs are on the beadboard backer. Tad has acknowledged that that's what she was looking for. So I've sent that to her, and then the conversation that we had, and I probably should have explained this to you, is bring the elevation, so I can see what the beadboard backer looks like with the signs on it. That was the purpose of tonight's exercise. I thought that she was initially, was going to be here today, or I would have gotten them to her, you know, in advance, so I could have spoken to her about it. But that is the design unity, which is the separate sign.
It can be done by shape of the backing sign.
And then the tenant's sign is on the front.
Okay, so just for my clarification, we're not talking about colors here at all for design unity?
That, that is an open question. It's, there's no one way to achieve design unity. And so in the plaza to the north, it's red. It's the red sign.
Right, well, they try.
Sort of. In, you know, the plaza to the north of this, it's the black sign with the gold.
Yep, yep.
And so here, they're proposing beadboard. If you want to talk about colors, you can.
I don't know. I mean, it's, we're kind of vague when we talk about.
At the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza, there's, there is a difference in color.
Yep, yep.
So it's up, it's up to you and the applicant when you come up with your master plan.
Right, and we're kind of vague when we talk about design unity. But it can take the shape, it can be shapes, it can be colors, it can be materials. It can be all of them, or one of them, or anything like that.
There's discretion.
Right, right, right.
And you're exactly, you listed everything. Coordinated font styles, coordinated colors, coordinated shapes, or coordinated materials. In this case.
I do occasionally read our zoning.
You already know that. This would be coordinated in terms of materials are all beadboard, and that includes the Mavis sign?
Yes.
And the shape of all the signs is the same too, right?
Correct, yes.
So they're hitting two.
Okay, okay.
Will the signs all be different colors?
I would imagine they'll all be the white beadboard, you know, the white backer.
Well, Mavis has the.
Mavis has the, they're Mavis blue.
But we're showing one here, we're doing the opposite. And the letters and so forth to be determined. I mean, I would rather talk about any restrictions on signage when Neil is here, because I think that.
Well, they have to come back for assigned permits anyway.
Yeah, they do. I just didn't know if you wanted to see it tonight.
These are placeholders.
No, yeah, I just.
The next chapter of that is based on this. I sent this to Verizon. They resubmitted a sign to Tad that has the white backer.
Okay.
And it's pretty much looks like the drawing, it's, it's on the plan. So that's what it looks like, except I think the Verizon is red on the application.
Is it the same font, or is it?
It's their font, and I think it's at an angle, you know, how Verizon usually does an angle. But it is on the white, same sign with the rectangle.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to really bring up that as a discussion, because I found, I found the emails hard to follow.
Okay, oh, so you've seen them?
Yes.
Second, fourth, okay.
It's up to the board, and, you know, I'm going to suggest that the applicant, one of the things, one of the reasons we were bifurcating signage from the approval was that we didn't have a clear master plan for the property signage. So if you do want to include the master plan for the property signage, I would either put a narrative with it explaining what your design unity is and what you're going to adhere to moving forward, or put it on the elevations itself.
So if we don't do it tonight, then an individual applicant comes forward and needs to apply for a sign, do they have to come back before this board?
They do.
Yeah.
So what we're approving here would be sign locations.
And that's why we were trying to, okay.
Right, is sign locations.
We were trying to avoid that.
It's just the way the code's written. I don't think there's any way to approve a sign unless we saw it in advance. I mean, if you put on the Verizon signs, if you put on all the signs that, we can approve those as part of the site plan approval. But for new tenants, new tenants, we would not be able to approve.
Right, existing tenants, yeah.
In any situation, then they're going to have to come back.
In any situation, except that if you didn't have a master plan and Verizon came in, they would make Verizon bring you guys in for the site master plan.
So we'll show the beadboard backer and the style and the size, meaning a rectangle, and then each tenant would come in for their individual application. But we'll put Verizon's on, so that you have it.
Perfect.
Can I ask a question? I know we're skipping over Chris temporarily.
I'm done.
But to follow up on your concern, and I think it's a legitimate concern. So the Verizon's going to have their own font.
Yes.
And then C+ could have their own font.
Correct.
And Mavis could have their own font.
Yes.
Everyone's having their own colors, except for the white background. I don't see where that.
Well, let me just point out a couple of things. First, the fonts are different at Hyde Park Mall where Stop &amp; Shop is. Those are all different fonts there as well. Some are serifs, some are art, some, they're different sizes. And we justified the design unity there because they're all backlit. All the signs are backlit, and the original Stop &amp; Shop has, was it called a Fruit Bowl?
Oh, yeah.
I thought it was a Toucan myself, so I couldn't read it very well. But yes, because that had different colors, the different colors were allowed throughout that site. At the adjoining shopping center, Hyde Park Town Center South, they have tried to achieve that the fonts are all different there too, but they've achieved it by a uniform color. Those are also, as the signs have changed, they've all gone to the backlit, and they're all red. So there are different ways for us to determine whether it achieves it or not.
There just seem to be truly a minimum amount of uniformity by having just the white. I guess my, and I would need to think about this and go looking more closely at places, but to have different colors and different fonts, I don't know how that in one small shopping center, that's not really that small, really has, purports unity.
Well, to go back again, the way the code reads, it's also, it's the shape of the sign and also materials. And in this case, the materials are the same in each, each, each one that we're looking at the location for. And the shape of the signs themselves are also the same. It's kind of like across the street at Liberty Bell Plaza. Those actually, if you look, have different fonts as well, but they, they all have the same shape, and they are burgundy and gold. So there are different ways to achieve it. I mean, it's up to us when they come in to make sure to say.
And I may be the lone voice here that.
No, no, again, we're.
I mean, I'm just trying to.
It's something that we have to wrestle with.
Right, work through. And we're approving right now locations, not necessarily signs, except for the Verizon and whatever else you may want to throw on there.
We're just doing Verizon for now.
And Tad will also opine whether it's code compliant before we can make that approval if it's shown in a building. Mr. Oliver, we skipped you.
So just a quick comment on the benches. I agree that I don't see the need for all of them, but one on the Building Four, I think it was, would be appropriate by the barber. And I just want to point out that the phasing of the site, I think, is a great example of our board working with the client to, you know, make sure that the site's working logically and, you know, for.
And smoothly.
Yeah, smoothly and efficiently, so, you know, I think it's a good idea we do that.
Thank you. Ms. Dennethley, any additional comments?
I'm going to weigh in on the bench. Shocking. It would be nice, really would be nice to have one by the barber shop. Because we don't know what's going to happen down the road in the next year or two with the sidewalks, I definitely understand why the owners would opt not to add another bench at this moment, at this time. But I could see, once the sidewalks are done, that would be in front, facing Nine, might be a good place to add one, because if you have people coming into Emergency One, you have family members, someone's sitting outside, someone's waiting, or it's crowded, or what have you, that could be a nice location. And I know you are putting in a lot of money and resources into the small public park.
Central Park.
And, but this would be a nice balance. And I thought we had discussed the color blue for the benches.
So the board had discussed the same blue as at the Roundout Bank?
Yes.
When they, when the bench was going to be on one side of Route Nine and on the other? So now that the bench is only at Building Four, and it's set significantly back from Roundout Bank, do you care about the color?
We would really object to blue.
No, there's no reason to put a blue one in there. It's by itself. Just saying, so I've added it up, and all six, so let me make the seventh one the bench by the barber shop. Otherwise, there's just some questions, I believe, left over for signage, which I think Tad and you guys can solve that on your own. We will be relaxing the standard in the future approval resolution for, to allow instead of stamped asphalt, we will have the high-visibility ladder. You should show the barber pole. I just want to make, I remember when they went in with their sign for sideburns, Tad asked about a barber pole. They said, "Yes, we're putting it in," so she made them show as part of the signage package.
They submitted for a sign already?
No, no, no.
When they first came in.
Okay.
Because I remember that was a safe, some sort of health requirement, that they show a barber pole. I don't know why. Other than that, I think we've hit all the areas that are relevant. I think, I heard most of the board, I believe, agreed that they don't have to put in the extra two trees that they're proposing. Just leave the two that are there, so we can save a little bit of money there. Although, as Ms. Leibl told me today, all the landscaping's already been ordered, so it's not as though there's a real savings now.
I think there's three. There was one in front of Emergency One and two in front of the park.
Oh, those should still go in, but in front of Emergency One, there's two, there's two buildings. Yeah, the park is fine.
Okay.
The two, there's two new trees shown before Emergency One, a cherry, and there's already a cherry, and there's an existing honey locust, so they were going to have two and two, so it'd be four trees in front.
Where the viburnum was.
Okay.
Yes, that's right. One of the conditions that we put in was to add a cherry tree to the left of Building.
Four.
Four, the one closest to pine woods, and that was a cherry, so you can just use that cherry that was going to go in the front to the side of the building.
I just have to see where we put, there's drainage that went.
This is where, this is where a viburnum was proposed. We just said do a tree instead of a shrub. That's all. And the Kwanzaa cherry's not a tall tree.
So we're swapping the shrub that's next to the building for a tree that is, okay.
Yep, it's already ordered, so it's in the condition. Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application?
We have to open the public hearing.
Oops. Any motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, I don't have initials written there, so I should have known that one. Now, would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? They're being done. Are there any additional comments? Make a motion to adjourn this to June 20th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to do our best to update that resolution.
Thank you so much for the.
Nice to meet you guys.
Yes, thank you. You did a great job.
Yes, it's a pleasure to meet you as well. Really?
A few more to make, yeah.
Okay, that sounds good.
I like hearing that. We're now out of public hearings. The next item on the agenda is a workshop. Do you guys want to take a break, or are we just okay to work through?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
I think we're good. Yeah, it's not that bad. Yeah, once we get through.
The first workshop item is the Bella Phil subdivision. As a reminder, the applicants are seeking approval to carve off two lots from the parent lot, creating now three for the 303 nine-acre parcel located on Albany Post Road between St. Andrews and West Dorsey. The applicants have already received approval for a hotel and a wastewater treatment facility, along with.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I, the reason why, so I put in the two lots, because the ODA would only be allowing building permits for those two lots, not for anything on the parent parcel.
And then, and then we ended up adding a sentence to the end.
Okay.
Partially, so.
Fine, believe me, fine. I had to write so many of these today, my head still bewildered. So we had a meeting where we discussed the open development area. There were many members present. Basically, if you read the letter I wrote.
There were only three of us present.
Right, well, I'm referring to that. Three attentive listeners, one left. We, we do not believe that this project can move forward without an open development area. It's as simple as it gets, so it's something that they need to have. I believe that everyone in town is now looking forward to that hotel, now that you can put the two small signs, people keep telling me. I can barely see the hotel. Like, I'm sorry, that's the temporary size. But at any rate, I've written a letter recommending to the town board that they adopt the ODA. It's going to need to be revised slightly, and I.
Looks very slightly.
So maybe it should say, "Two new lots," yes, that's fine. Then the, at the bottom, under installation of utilities, preliminary road grading and destruction to the binder course, et cetera, there, instead of just et cetera. And that building permits may be issued upon improvement of the roads to the binder course, upon proof that all conditions of site plan approval have been satisfied. There's too many arrows, sorry. Then it sounds, it looks as if it's prerequisite to the issuance of building permits set forth in the.
So we were just trying to make it clear that you just can't start the site work until after the, until after we have an approved site plan.
Did you two brilliant legal minds work on this? My legal mind was not functioning today, so, fine. We're, I'm very happy with this. Thank you. Does everyone understand what they've added? Basically, it's a bigger description than I had of just site preparation work, including grading, installation of utilities. They added preliminary road grading and construction of the binder course, et cetera. And then they've basically said that you're not going to get building permits until you've had improvements to the roads, to the binder course level, as well as proof that everything has been set forth, and the site plan has been satisfied.
They just, they brought it up by another five percent. That's what they did.
Thank you. So first, let me turn it over to you guys. What do you guys want to add? Sorry.
Well, just real quickly, thank you again for meeting us last week. Very, very helpful. And as a result of that meeting, we attached a plan to, that you were referring to in that letter. That plan is, that plan there, along with, with the details. Now, to make it easier, I made them all eleven by seventeen.
Yay!
Pass them around, easier to look at.
Getting all kinds of buildings.
Spec is in there for the road profile. We worked the geofact, so it's all done.
Pete, I talked to Pete today, and he hadn't had a chance to review all of this.
Thank you.
So I put in, as approved by the town engineer, because just in case there are any changes that he has with you, Chris, it seemed easier to recommend that they adopt it, based on any of those may be changing. Also of note, if everybody read the letter, I think, I know you all did actually, because you've commented, when we had our meeting, it's very clear that these roads, if you look at how they're drawn, they're wider. Then there are other smaller subsidiary roads, they're smaller, and so, given the four road classifications, major or through roads are really meant to handle sort of highway traffic, complete highway traffic. But commercial or industrial roads, as they're called, would be what these are. They're meant to connect a volume of traffic to a commercial site, so they're already drawn wider. And then Type One and Type Two local roads, Type One is just, it ends in a cul-de-sac, which there are no cul-de-sac roads here, so all the smaller roads would be Type Two local. And so based on that, excuse me, the applicants have designed specific grading and materials and width and paving, all the details that go into the cross-sections for both types of roads. And then they highlighted the color of the roads, if I remember correctly.
It's on the back, the last one.
Thank you. The, yeah, see? There we go. Very, very nice. And by the way, done very quickly. Our meeting was just last week.
Yeah, it was, it was.
So what we'll be doing is, we'll have it. I, when we send this to the town board, we would send the digital attachments with the digital version of the letter. Do we need to send copies of this too?
I actually think this is more, this is easier to read than the large plan.
I just, I would like to have it sent digitally, so that the town board has a digital record.
Right, if they had this version of it digital, that would be good.
Yeah, they do. This is a lot easier to read, just saying that.
This is great.
Okay.
On my little notebook, it's always hard to zoom in and try to figure out where I am, et cetera, so I agree. Did you bring enough copies, Larry, for us?
Yes.
Thank you. No, for the town board too?
Three there.
Did you bring enough for the town board too, when we refer it?
Could you drop, could you drop additional copies off tomorrow, so she can refer to the town board?
How many?
There are five town board members?
Plus the attorney.
Plus Warren.
Plus the attorney.
Plus the clerk.
Simon.
Does the clerk review these materials? Oh, yes, right, so seven.
So seven.
Seven.
And a CD as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Keep offering, keep offering.
CD is easy to zip.
What else you got?
I mean, if you can just email it also, if it's not too big.
Well, you know Devon Law Office.
I know, she likes, she likes to bring stuff over, so, okay.
So, I'm sorry, what's, the number is five?
Seven.
Seven. Plus CD.
Thank you for providing, providing those for us, and.
They really do tell the story.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the way it's set up.
As I said, Pete's going to have to review it and give his official imprimatur of acceptance. I see him already looking with consternation.
Larry, Larry, let's see, or Chris, I guess I'm not sure, what's the reference, like 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, is that?
Those numbers don't mean anything, the 1.1, 1.2.
That's why I was confused.
There's just, there's different types of commercial roads, so I have, so far I have three sections in red. Those are 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, and I called the green 2.1. The way I set this plan up is hopefully a good start for the whole project, so we could just look at everything in an organized fashion. If you look at each little road segment up closely, there's a little circle that'll say one, two, or three on it. And in the top of each section view, I'll have one, three, four, or five, so you could quickly reference in a conversation which piece of the road you're talking about.
So, again, what we're doing is essentially, if you look at the last page, we're providing the template for paving for all future roads, so this is established now. We won't have to go through this again.
Right.
Which is good, because.
So you can almost circle any area, and then.
And you'll know which one is.
And just add on to it.
Back to this, so, you know, it's, it's really, I love, I love working up here. I particularly love working with my colleagues, the fact that every one of you, without me having to remind you of touched on the bench issue. It was like, yes, yes, yes. But it's also, it's interesting for big, huge projects like this, that I wasn't ever sure were even going to be built or started upon, to see all the blocks that it needs to take to get it going. It's, it's interesting. I haven't been doing this as long as other people, so, professionals, in other words, like yourselves. So anyway, thank you for that. Anything else we need to discuss tonight, except for the ODA letter and this? I know from my last minutes that Transportation Corporation is underway. You're working with DOT. One of the things that we discussed at the offline meeting, and I apologize, I haven't had a moment to type up a file memo for our offline meeting, but essentially, DOT only likes to authorize one temporary work permit at a time. They're authorizing it for the northern entrance, which is the, we'll call it almost a driveway, or a road, but then a driveway to the wastewater treatment facility. It might be transferable, once they're completed there, to the southern entry. So what they're going to need to do, though, initially, because they can't start on that until they finish the northern one, was for the initial site work, i.e. the grading of the roads, bringing utility lines, et cetera, preliminary road grading, construction of the binder course, et cetera. The initial work would be done off West Dorsey, that entrance. And that's envisioned to be an emergency entrance only, and we discussed some signage, what to do to make sure that. But this, this, I should stress, will not be like the equipment coming in to build the hotel. By that point, there should be the southern entry that's already created, because we did not review, in terms of SEACER or anything, that West Dorsey being used as a construction entrance, you know, for a long time. So it would just be through some preliminary site work. The preliminary site work, as was noted in the letter, would actually be part of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, the SWIP, because the SWIP deals with all the invasiveness, or invasive activities into the land. So that would be under the SWIP control. That was both Tad's and Victoria's and Pete's and everybody's opinion right there. And Don, you name it, they all agreed, so those were essentially. So, those were essentially, that's essentially it from the meeting. The most important probably is the fact they're gonna have to deal with DOT back and forth to transfer these. They sometimes allow these, too, but they said it takes time, and Larry thinks that it's faster to transfer, because they should be able to get work going that way. Anything else?
I thought we were going to apply for the second permit.
Pardon me?
I thought the outcome of the meeting was that they would be applying for the second temporary access permit.
We have applied for the...
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they were going to...
But it's just that it's such a glacial process.
You don't know how long it's gonna take.
If or when we have it.
But at least it'll be, it'll be in the works.
Right.
So we applied for the northern access, and, you know, we're really intending to have the full permit for the whole site package by November, December, something around there. So at that point, we have that, the main Bellafield intersection as a construction access. So as soon as the land donation thing goes through real estate, we should be, and we get our approval, we should be able to use it. So we'll get the north temporary, and if we don't get the temporary for the south in time, we know that once we get the approval for the full site package, we'll have it there.
You'll have it for everything, right.
Well, I mean, the concern, of course, was using Dorsey for the construction work.
Right. The thing also to understand is Shander doesn't close on the property until we have the DOT permit, so they aren't doing anything. So that's it.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you, and thank you for saying that for the record. Comments, Pete?
No, I'll look at this, it looks, you know, pretty good, but, now, is this something that we need to have done before the town board accepts the ODA, correct?
Yes, yes, because this would be...
This is telling you what they're approving.
Again, I'm looking at...
What is the date of the meeting?
Their next meeting is two days before ours, so June the 18th. So, I believe, and I'm looking to Ms. Ventala, Ms. Podoro, the way I looked at it is, they should be adopting these documents, the road specs, along with whatever language is for the open development area.
Yes.
And I would assume that, I mean, if you're looking to have them adopt that at the meeting on the 20th, I assume that, or the 18th, sorry, that you guys will work with Warren...
Yes.
...to propose language for the open development area, so that can be restricted, et cetera, et cetera. So you might want to work with Victoria first on that, and then send it on to Warren, that's just up to you.
Any comments you have, Pete, we'll address them right away.
Yeah, maybe Friday I'll give you guys a call if you're around.
I mean, there could always be a condition, the approval of the ODA language, that it was contingent upon subsequent approval by the town, by the, what am I, what am I writing?
What?
Warren's resolution.
Town board level? You mean the town board resolution?
Yeah, because...
Nah, I mean, this is something we can resolve.
Okay, good.
We want to get it done.
Yeah, I think you're gonna be happy with the spec.
It's pretty, it's pretty simple.
Okay, any other comments?
No.
Ms. Podoro, any comments?
No.
Ms. Denabelli?
Yes. I want to tell you, it was such a pleasure having that offline meeting. I learned an awful lot about ODAs, and hopefully my brain can retain all of this as we go through the process, and I look forward to the completion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver?
Thank you so much for working so aggressively on this, and looking forward to it going forward, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Dexter?
I would just echo what both of my colleagues just said, but especially that offline meeting. And then now seeing the result, it's like, okay, now I do understand exactly. It's just giving you guys a mechanism to move forward.
Mr. Pickett?
Sorry I missed the ODA meeting, but I really had to throw that in just for JP, and I really liked this, and I think it shows you're looking forward by...
It's tabling and everything.
Coming a lot.
That, now you can go and reference them quickly, designate the rest of the structure, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy?
No comment.
Ms. Weiser?
I apologize for missing the meeting as well, and no comment.
So...
For the record, there was less than a quarter in attendance at this meeting.
Make it a motion to authorize me to send the letter and the accompanying attachments to the town board, and the letter as revised. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And thank you very much for that. That was...
Thank you for correcting it. I don't know what I was, you know what it was? I was thinking I should, was this what I meant to send last night? I can't remember which one I wrote. I wrote one yesterday, forgot to send it. I had attachment deficit disorder.
Yeah, that was the first one.
That's what it was, was I was gonna send it separately to you guys, to have you review it, and then I forgot, because I forgot to attach it.
Well, you know what they say about legal writing, there's no such thing as good legal writing, only good legal rewriting.
I haven't heard that before, but if I can use it in the future, I will be crediting you on it, I promise.
That's the same thing with design.
So, we've, we've, I'm sorry, I need to go back in for a moment here. We have not done secret yet on this project?
Which, which one?
For the subdivision?
We did, we reaffirmed prior secret determination of non-subdivision.
Why am I not, aha, never mind. So have we set a public hearing on this?
Yes, the public hearing is continued until...
That's what it is, we're in workshop right now. Thank you.
Some meetings ago, we scheduled the public hearing continuance to the 20th, and then the only other issue that needs to be considered tonight is the extension of the site plan.
Right, and that is our next topic, so we can just segue over.
I have that.
Thank you.
And to other business.
And again, please note that the reason why we're extending the approval for the site plan is that they have not had a chance to meet all the conditions. Larry, do you want to go over those real quickly?
Yes, I can go over those. DEC, we contacted today, the speedies permit is done, ready to go.
Congratulations.
That's good, but they issue all the permits at the same time, so we're waiting for the Corps to, you know, wrap up their stuff. They should be very, very close. There's the stream disturbance permit internally with DEC, they're close on that, so we're close. DOT, Chris worked pretty hard, not only was he doing this, he was also making a submitted for the temporary access permit.
Thank you, Chris.
That went in on Thursday or Friday.
Wow.
Actually, he hand-delivered it, and he spoke to the permit administrator, so he's on top of it.
And they've been very helpful, too.
Good to hear.
Great.
DOT, we're putting everything together for the permit easement, that includes the phase one, we're working on the phase one for all three parcels, environmental phase one that has to be done, we separated it out, that's probably gonna be done, just so you know, about three weeks, that amount of time, all the paperwork. DOH is technically approved, waiting on the speedies permit to be issued. We submitted last week revised comments to Dutch County Water Wastewater Authority, so they're doing their review. We wanted to wait till we got the DOH approval before we submitted the sewer. As you know, they're the named entity in case of default, so they want to have a chance to review it. And we are very aggressively working through the resolution comments now. There's, how many, 28 of them, so? So we're going through those, and that includes some miscellaneous town permits, which we're pulling together the applications for. One of the things was the...
The storm water.
Storm water easement agreement thing, so, are we up to date on that?
I have some generic language for the maintenance agreement.
We have, we have one that we drafted a while back, I'm not sure...
Ted sent it.
Did she?
Yeah.
Ted sent a past one that had been moved.
Okay, I'll take a look. I saw the emails, but I was out of the office, and so I'll, I'm trying to catch up on them.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll send it to you to see if you might know a more recent one, or one with any different terms, but...
I mean, they're all pretty standard, they're all based on the model.
The last thing I have on my list here, the wastewater treatment plant is under construction up in Toronto. Yeah, that's, that's, they build them in containers, and then those containers are shipped down here, and so we gotta meet with the town building inspector on making sure we have all the...
That was gonna be my next question, yeah.
Yep, that's why we have these meetings, so I have that here as well.
Can I just say that my mind was blown about how many...
Pieces, yeah.
How many pieces for a wastewater treatment plant, now that it's being constructed out of the country, all the eyes that look at it, and, oh my goodness.
Well, let's say, let's just point out, you really don't want a wastewater treatment facility to fail. We're talking about one that size, so it's good that we have many eyes in its own way.
But it's mind-boggling.
And what's neat about this one is the headworks, so all the infrastructure for the entire plant are going in, and we're only approved, of course, on the speedies permit for 21,000 gallons per day for just a hotel. And so it'd be very easy to...
To just expand.
Yep. We'd have to update the speedies permit.
Each time.
That is the best planning I've ever heard, because you're doing, it's taking a lot more time now.
Yeah.
But that makes everything subsequent to this go much quicker. That would normally hold you up on some of these...
Right, so what you'll see initially is one trailer, you know, to handle the first flow, and then full build-out will be three that handle 114,000 gallons per day each.
Wow.
I remember when you first proposed, DEC had a fit, why am I gonna let you have the 21,000, not the 414? So, and I understand why now, but I thought at the first, my God, I could read shrill in the writing in the comments, so, at any rate...
Well, everybody's been really, you know, they want to get this done, too.
I'm glad to hear that, good. So, Chris, you have this folder, do you have the extension for the site plan?
I do. Resolution to grant 180-day extension of conditional site plan approval, in it Bellafield, resolution number 2017-04E, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved pursuant to section 108-9.3E4C of the zoning law, the planning board hereby grants 180-day extension of the time in which the applicant must satisfy the conditions of the site plan approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you guys for staying so late with us, and for all the information you keep providing. I'm looking, I'm thinking that the town board should adopt the ODA before we conclude subdivision approval review.
Aren't they anticipating adopting it on the 18th?
Yes, and this is a major subdivision, so you need to also apply for preliminary approval as well as final approval?
And we have.
Okay.
Fees, are you all up to date?
I'm still looking at the file that's up there.
Thank you. But I would think, I would presume that we're getting close to being able to, it's a minor subdivision in the sense it's only creating three lots, it's a major because the way the code reads about not being one town road.
The biggest holdup was, was the ODA.
Right.
So once they receive approval from that, I don't think there are many other issues. There may be some technical issues, we'll take a look.
So, would you, I'm gonna give this one back to you, can you make the final correction?
Yes.
Which, I have a busy day tomorrow, and I want to get that out to the town board as soon as possible.
The 2:50.
Now I know for sure.
So we'll see you back when we reopen the public hearing on the 20th?
Yes.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
We appreciate all of your extra work in this. I think you made a very good point, and that in the early phases of this, everything is hard, like every step, now with all the library approach, wastewater treatment plant, and then the other thing is that while it seems you could chip away at the conditions, because DEC, for example, won't issue one permit without issuing all of them, it seems like you're doing a lot of work and not...
Getting anything.
...doing anything to really put the check mark, but it's all gonna come in a flood.
Yeah, it is, it's getting very exciting.
But you're laying all the groundwork, too.
Yeah, you front-loaded the process, this being the fact, after this, future applications go more quickly, because this has all been taken care of now at the beginning.
Right, the DOT, DEC...
Figuring out the ODA.
Town...
And of course, the first statement building was extremely important, so it was all the time and effort that everybody spent on it was definitely worth.
Well, again, I know why all my colleagues serve, it's to try to help the town, and it's a pleasure, because this is helping the town, I think. Provide some destination, you know, overnight stays is a good thing for us, our community, et cetera. And to finally have a functioning sewer in the town, even though it only works for one part of it, is still a big accomplishment in and of itself. So, thanks, we'll see you in two weeks.
Yeah, thank you.
Good night.
Ma'am, you've been so patiently waiting here, are you, are you one of the...
Big business, a forge.
Oh, it's you.
Oh!
So, so...
We can skip ahead.
Under Roberts' rules of order, if, under Roberts' rules of order, if the board does not adopt the agenda, the chairperson can move it around. So may I, I'm gonna go ahead and move Julia Forget to the front.
To the next.
Or, yeah, to the next one, who has this application, who has this resolution?
I do.
So, by the way, Ms. Forget is located in the scenic area of statewide significance. She, however, is not visible from either one of the historic sites, the FDR or the Roosevelt, nor is she visible from the river, you just happen to be stuck there. We're trying to work on that by next year to stop having people come here. I hope you weren't bored the whole night, I hope you weren't bored the whole night, so. Okay, who has this, this resolution?
I do. Site plan waiver, town code section 108-9.4C2, Julia Forget, resolution number 2018-31, whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Towne Hyde Park Planning Board by Julia Forget on May 21, 2018, for property located at 13 Kirchner Avenue in the Towne Hyde Park. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, the Towne Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Forget Renovations regarding specific request as submitted on May 21, 2018, and in the building permit application filed dated May 8, 2018 by Julia Forget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Forget, thanks for waiting.
Thanks a lot.
No, if you, if you have any friends who, neighbors who need to come through here for a site plan waiver in the meantime, they're free to call the office and ask if they need to be here. When we get a zoning administrator's recommendation, you don't have to be.
I imagine that I might not have to be here, I was very curious.
Pretty exciting, isn't it?
You got your civic, you got your civic class in.
It's gonna be just fine.
Not easy.
Oh, you're, you're welcome to...
You're welcome to come anytime.
And it's looking, it's looking very nice. Thank you.
Yeah, welcome to Hyde Park, that means, then. Thank you very much.
There's a tree in the front.
Oh.
The tree is, which I hear are popular.
And getting more popular.
Yes, far more popular, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is another extension request by Creek Park Mobile Home Park, located at 575 Creek Road. This is the mobile home park that's just south of Joseph Steakhouse. This is one where they're having the same problems that Joseph has, they had no records of any set disposal, so it's taking them longer to be able to meet the conditions, so they requested an extension. Who has this file?
I do. Resolution to grant 180-day extension of conditional site plan approval of Creek Park Mobile Home Park, resolution number 2017-41B, whereas, 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 whereas,
whereas, now therefore be it resolved pursuant to section 108-9.3e4c of the code, the planning board hereby grants 180-day extension of the time in which the applicant must satisfy the condition of site plan approval to December 17, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. I will note that this is their, just like with the hotel project, we just gave them their last extension. We gave them both 90 days' extension, we cannot extend it anymore. The next item on the agenda is a similar request. This would be the enclave at Hyde Park. I believe we're very close down into the details of this being signed.
I hope so.
Who has this resolution?
I do. Resolution granting second extension of the time to satisfy the condition of final plat approval and site plan approval, the enclave, FKA the Meadows, resolution 16-491, whereas, 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 ten more times. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a second 90-day extension of time in which to satisfy the conditions of the final plat approval and site plan approval to September 17, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda would be another site plan waiver for a rear deck on a town home. This is at Russett Road. And this is a, in case you're wondering why it's on here, or to add for the audience why it's on here, this is in the multifamily town home development that's back in Greenfields East. Anything that's there requires site plan because it's multifamily. And it's, I believe, an existing rear deck or a replacement rear deck. So, who has this resolution?
That'd be me.
Thank you, Chan.
I'm gonna go with Ola, 30 Russett Road, resolution number 2018-32, whereas an application receiving a request, requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Joseph and Susan Ola for a property located at 30 Russett Road in the Town of Hyde Park and whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled "Ola," regarding the specific request as submitted in the building department file for Ola.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda would be to discuss my response from the planning board as relates to the Delaware engineering report for the redevelopment of the town center. I don't know if everyone had a chance to review that whole long file. It's the report, it's comprehensive.
I was not able to review the whole file other than just to kind of skim. It just, it was a beautiful piece of work. I mean, it was just, yeah, we should be very proud.
Pete has been integrally involved in this process, I believe. The next steps, as I understand it, once we, once we recommend to the town board that they adopt it as an amendment to the comprehensive plan, then I believe they're going to go and start working on the sewer district, am I correct?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna start to have weekly, weekly conference calls and plotting out a strategy and reaching out to several business owners, similar to what we did, you know, the last time to have, have some people that'll, you know, champion, you know, the sewer and what we need to work on, because, of course, before you go out and talk to people, everybody's gonna want to know how much.
Right.
So, we gotta get some kind of a ballpark, you know, figure. So, that's what, that's what they're doing now, they're running some rough, like, numbers based upon different, you know, options and stuff, so.
They have ballpark numbers in the report, but I was told that they're not, they're really ballpark. They're trying to get it a little bit closer.
Well, I mean, when I say, when I say numbers, I mean, like, cost per benefit, you know, unit.
Right.
So, like, if you own, you know, a restaurant, you may have 25 benefit units and each benefit unit is, I'm just making up numbers, $500 apiece. So, we need to get some rough...
Hey, can we get it down to $500 apiece?
I knew I shouldn't have said that, but...
You're gonna give me a good number, that's a good one to hear.
That's a good number, if we add it to that, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we're working, working along.
So...
Thank you, Pete.
By recommending that they adopt this, there's some conceptual layouts that, again, would not be, because there's been no generic environmental impact statement, an applicant would not have to necessarily adhere to it, but it's one of those that they would now be able to see what the town wants. It also envisions a zoning update, so I believe that we would have the opportunity to, I mean, I know we have the opportunity to comment on any changes they make to the zoning, but they're looking to make it form-based like we have with the Crossroads Corps. I noted that, for example, the report says that animal husbandry should be removed as an allowed use in the town center historic district. However, I mean, they talked about feedlots and large animal operations, but under our code, raising chickens is also animal husbandry, and I don't think you want to eliminate that from the center of town, so. But again, we would be able to work on all of that stuff as we go, so. Any further comments or should I get...
I would like to make a motion that we authorize the chairman to send a letter recommending the town board adopt the Hyde Park Town Center redevelopment report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Or any abstentions or nays? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the...
Signs.
Signs. So...
Sticky wicket.
What would you like me to do? I mean, I, for one thing, I don't know if I should reword the first point and just say that you should more carefully review your changes to ensure that it's not, that conforms with recent rulings by the Supreme Court regarding content-based regulations? Because, as Victoria points out in her memo to you, exempt signs are still categorized by content.
Yep.
There are still some, some tricky issues and, you know, the likelihood of being sued is probably small, but if you're gonna take the opportunity to make corrections to the sign law, we should make sure that what we're amending doesn't contain content-based restrictions.
Also, point two, so I tried to explain this, we, before we had four different categories of signs, commercial, and then below that with the subcategories, but those are two of them, would be commercial signs that are like for an individual standalone store or for those that are in a shopping center. Then we had exempt signs, I'm sorry, we had non-commercial signs and then we had exempt signs. Non-commercial has been proposed to be eliminated entirely, which means that right now, if you're a church, a new church...
Or any non-for-profit.
Or any non-for-profit, you wouldn't be able to...
Have a sign.
Have a sign.
Doesn't make sense.
So, that, to me, is a real issue because under exempt signs in the rear, it categorizes what are exempt, but it doesn't say for a nonprofit, it can be, I mean, you have a little bitty sign, from what I could see. The rest were just questions, so I guess the real question is, is are we recommending that they not adopt or adopting unless more revisions are made?
So, I thought of this, I'm just gonna jump right in. I thought of this as the same as the solar law, to be honest, that you're like really close, but you need to tune it up a little bit before you go live with it. I think the work that's been done was, was really good, but given, given the detail of the Supreme Court, I think we could just go a little further and, you know, I'm not comfortable as, as it is now to say yes, adopt it. I think it needs some more revisions.
I do, too.
I agree with Ann, I think it needs one more detailed deep pass just to make sure that...
All the pieces work together.
Yeah. I mean, just in the questions that have come up.
And just so it's a little clearer, so it's...
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I could revise this to say that you, by eliminating the fourth, the third category of non-commercial, but I thought I said that, and I was trying to make these brief because I don't know how much the town board's gonna read for them in a row either. But, so, I will, I've taken out the adopt, I will put do not adopt, and I think I should add that at the end, that based on our recommendation, they have to have a supermajority to pass it, which if four of them or five of them want to pass it, they have the supermajority, but when we recommend against, it's like county planning recommending against, they must have a fourth vote. So, I'll amend that. And by making that amendment, are there any other changes you'd like to see or should I, can I get a motion to authorize me to send it with the changes I discussed?
As discussed, I would make that motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Your comment, number three, is something, you have it as a question, but it's a real issue with the amendment to 108-24 to a prohibited issuance of a temporary sign to an individual tenant located in one shopping center.
To more, it's unclear, so...
Which is unclear, but I'm thinking, we just went through with the shopping center here in town, so does that mean one of them couldn't put up a sign? That doesn't make sense.
Well, that's, that's the discussion.
That's the discussion, yeah.
Right, that's, so, I mean, how could it pass?
I think the language could be, well, I could change it right now, I could tell them how to do it, but...
I mean, the problem is it says per lot.
Right.
Or per owner, and so that means you can only have one temporary sign, so if the barber shop has it, well, tough luck Verizon.
Yes.
Right.
So...
That's sort of what we're, what we're doing, and there's ways to change the language to permit that per business.
But, well, that was basically what I'm saying, I'm in support of the fact of not passing it because of these...
It could have been intentional because I did speak with Ms. Moss.
That's why it's a question, because Tad was told to review this and got back with separate comments to the town board. I gave comments to the town board that I don't think all of them were taken, so it's, it's, well, at any rate, so other questions?
Nope.
We have a motion made by Ann to authorize me to send it as amended, so they, we recommend to not adopt and we point out that that needs a supermajority.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes.
And all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. The next item is to recommend that they change the coverage for solar farms, and I don't see any issues with this one because we saw, or the fourth are coming from Liam, the British Company, two of the parcels, it's owned by the same farmer, but they're not that big a parcel, and 15% is not what they need for coverage because they, again, have, you know what I'm talking about, so.
The impervious was envisioned not for solar farms. It was for houses, for big, yeah, so it didn't take into consideration that actually it does hit most of the ground.
None of us looked through it to carry through, you're right. None of us looked through it. So, if everyone's okay with this letter, make it a motion.
I'll make that motion to authorize...
And I made all these motions.
To send a letter of comment to the town board, solar farm, maximum impervious.
Chan, seconds. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the next item on the agenda is not on the agenda. It's a quick discussion. I promise, quick. Our consultants, this, it's relevant to why we're still here. Our consultants have requested or asked me...
Suggested.
Suggested that we begin these meetings at 6:00 instead of 7:00.
Ooh.
I'm fine with that, but I don't work outside, I don't work for pay, no. I can make that...
Well, let me just, again, like, quickly, I just mentioned this, you know, to Michael because there are a lot of boards, I go to a lot of board meetings, you know, I know that Victoria, Victoria does also. For years, the Town of Pleasant Valley started at 6:00, 6:30, that's very, that's very good. Recently, the Town of Poughkeepsie started their meetings at 5:00.
Wow.
Which is outrageous.
Which is kind of ridiculous, but, and I go there, too, you know, to fill in. So, I just mentioned it to Michael, I said, you know, have you ever, you know, considered moving up, you know, the meetings a little bit? It's certainly like a decision of, you know, the planning board, you know, but I know a lot of the applicants like appreciate earlier, you know, starting, starting times. I know the consultants, obviously, you know, we do also, so it's just something that I mentioned, you know, to Michael.
I want to add, Victoria was like, woo-hoo.
I'm, I'm fine with it, I mean...
It's up to the board, but...
I would just ask that we give our applicants as much notice as possible before we do that, because they're really used to it starting at 7:00.
I don't, I have to go back and look at our bylaws to make sure that they have specified that we start at 7:00, but there's nothing that I've found in town law that says, well, I, you know what?
I mean, the open meeting clause is you have to be open and there's, there's some schools of thought that say, you know, a meeting at 10:00 a.m. on a Monday is not really open to...
Gee, I would agree.
But...
But one hour is...
You know, Town of Rhinebeck starts at 6:30 p.m., their, their planning board meetings.
I mean, I know certainly during the winter, I'd love to be here at 6:00 and out when it's not completely pitch black.
It's pitch black when you get here.
But we know what you mean.
Unless you want to stay till morning.
It'd be nice not to be waving at Santa Claus and the reindeer and on the way home when we're out late, so if everyone's okay, then let me do some research and see.
Excellent.
And we'll go ahead and, we should try to maybe start this for our second meeting, our first meeting in July, which would be July the 18th?
We would have to renotice the, if the board wants to do this, we have to republish...
Oh, any public hearings, right, for public hearings?
Right, we, well, we could start the public hearings at 7:00.
True. You can just rearrange the schedule.
Do the waivers first.
We could, we could also have new public hearings subsequently starting at 6:30.
You just have to republish your meeting schedule, because you adopted it at the beginning of the year.
To meet at 7:00 o'clock, right.
Yeah.
So, we would just do that at the next meeting as well.
And that would have to be publicized, right?
Yeah, it just gets sent to the paper, posted on the, on the bulletin board.
Or on the website.
We would definitely want to put it on the website, there's lots to do, maybe we need to aim this more like August.
Well, take a vote first and then...
Make it a motion to change our meeting...
Well, I thought you wanted to look into it first.
Well, that's what I was saying, why am I getting a vote?
No, I meant look into it and then, then the board can vote to do it.
You have to be legal if it's legal.
Once you've done your research.
Thank you.
On whether you want to do it and when you want to start.
Okay.
Then you would vote to start on a certain date.
With a little more digging and then we'll set a date for when it goes into effect.
Okay, perfect.
Awesome.
So, make a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Video Ventures.
Yeah, it's much better, I'm hoping that people out there...
It was better.
It was, it was much better, I'm just, I could hear.
I can actually hear everybody.
I can hear.